Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Town Superior Board of Trustees meeting, regular meeting, for April 8th, 2019. Could we have the pledge of allegiance? So please rise for the pledge of allegiance. And just to make sure we're technically correct, we're also calling to order the meeting of the Superior Metropolitan District Number One Board of Directors for this evening. All right, next we'll have the roll call, please.
Mayor Clint Folsom.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lasis.
Here.
Sandy Hamerly.
Here.
Ken Lish.
Here.
Kevin Ryan.
Here.
Neil Shaw.
Here.
Laura Skowzinski.
Here.
Town Manager Matt Magley.
Here.
Town Attorney Dan Harvey.
Here.
Town Clerk Paul Sarden.
Here.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda. Are there any items on the agenda that the board members would like to change, pull off the consent, or any other changes to the agenda? Ken?
Could I pull item 3H, the Resolution of Approving Agreement with Du Barry Engineers?
Any other changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Lasis, second by Trustee Ryan. All those in favor? Passes unanimous? All right, next is reports, questions, and issues. Who'd like to start?
I'll start.
Sandy.
Um, I attended the ACIS meeting, it seems like it was a million years ago, and don't have anything in particular to report on that, other than to say that I continue to be impressed by how that committee has involved and is doing more and better work for the town. Not that they didn't do good work before, but they didn't, they were never able to hardly get quorum at their meetings, and they've really got a great group of engaged citizens, and I really want to thank them for all the great work they're doing. I also attended the OSAC meeting, and they, they are doing some great work around the area of the raptors we have here in town, and they're asking to potentially maybe install a raptor cam here in town, which we may not be able to do from a, just a safety for the animals, and we're looking into the, all the options there. But the other great thing they're doing is looking at some possible enhancements to the Shan Shan trailhead when we start working on that. We're gonna have a first phase, it's gonna be pretty basic, but then we're looking at possibly doing some enhancements to it. But the great thing that happened during the discussion was they, they actually talked about, well, was that really the thing they wanted to do? Because did we want to make it so popular that it actually diminished the other things we were trying to do in town and actually be detrimental to what they were trying to achieve? So it's just great to see their thoughtfulness. The main thing I wanted to report on tonight was, I think it made the trustees aware that we had submitted an application after talking with the trustees for support from the Dr. Cog TIP subregional funding for $2 million of a 2.5 million trail that we were proposing to connect from Superior, kind of this side of Superior, downtown Superior, and then hook around and then hook into the Broomfield side of the US 36 Bike Trail. Unfortunately, when that trail was built, it, when it got to Broomfield, it went to the other side of the street, and then it comes back over, but it pretty much bypasses our new downtown and also makes it kind of hard for our residents to actually get onto the bike trail. So we, when we initially submitted our application, we scored really, really, really high. We were the top of the list. We were the very best proposal. Unfortunately, when, after we proposed it, we found out that that initial proposal was gonna cost us about $7 million to construct, and so we kind of figured we wouldn't be able to do that. So we did resubmit a 2.5 million proposal that actually in many ways is better for the Town of Superior, because it will go up 88th, increase the ability of our students, particularly the students who are gonna be moving into downtown Superior to access Monarch, but then also put a hard surface trail through Autry Park. Unfortunately, when the most recent ranking came out on all the applications, our trail ranked, or we had two applications, that and a underpass under Marshall Road to access between the bike trail system and to get into the Boulder County trails. Unfortunately, our two proposals ended up dead last. To this moment, Alex Arienello, who helped us with the, or actually put the proposals together for us, we don't know why we went from the top to the bottom, other than it's a little less direct route than we had in the original plan. We went in with not much hope that we would get any money whatsoever. It was a very interesting opportunity to see all of our neighbors in the county jostling for funding the 15 million that was available to our TIP subregion. I'm happy to report that even though we were at the very bottom of the list, Alex and I were able to convince the, our colleagues in the other cities to give us 1.045 million of the 2 million that we had requested. We were not gonna get anything, so we made some progress. However, the issue for us as a town is that now, instead of us putting in 500,000 that we thought we were gonna be putting in, we now have to come up with 1.5 million. We have been submitted to Dr. Cog at the 1.045 million, but I did want to touch base with the trustees, because that means that we as a town are gonna have to find the 1.5 million to complete the trail system. We could pull our request right now if the trustees feel strongly that we don't want to try and do that. I would say, let's not. But I really, you know, if we stay in that request, then we are committed to spend that 1.5 million or find other sources to fund it. So I just, I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. I think Matt has some additional information.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, Trustee Hamerly and I discussed this, and one of the things I mentioned to her in our discussion was that something to consider is the Toll Brothers' application will have a significant portion of that trail that they will have to build as part of their development, and then also the Zaharius property, when that develops, they'll be responsible for the 88th portion of that trail, or if we build it, they'll have to reimburse us when it does develop, if it does develop. So the actual cost to the town could be significantly less than the 1.5 million that we're discussing tonight.
So just for clarification, so we're talking about, right now, the trail along the south side of, so our side, the west side of 36.
Right.
Ends southeast of the Sports Table Via Vista Hospital, and then it goes over to the other side of 36. So this would connect from there, run all the way past, through 88th, so underneath 88th or over 88th, somehow crossing 88th.
We don't, we didn't make a determination whether, but right now, it's probably gonna go over.
And then...
Because we don't have, you know, there, what is it, Alex, could Alex come up and help with this? Because when it started getting all the, I even took a ride the other day to see where it all went, but yes.
And so it would pick up down by Frank Farah Park and by the Flat Irons Mall. So basically, all the way down across the Zaharius property, southeast of the...
And basically, what we propose to do is that where it comes across at Broomfield, at Frank Farah Park, we would come through Autry Park, where there's right now a crusher fine trail, which is not appropriate for the bike trail. We would concrete that, and then it would connect through, out to 88th, you know, connect into where we have trails right now, and then go down, kind of around the circle, up 88th. The other great thing would be for us is that it would provide really, really fine trails for our children to now get to Monarch, because they could get on the eight-foot sidewalk on the Zaharius side of the street and get all the way to Monarch without having to do what they do now, which is to cross back and forth. So, you know, it, it will make it way easier for our residents, anywhere in town, to get access to the bike trail, whereas right now, their options are, they either kind of come down McCaslin, or they go to Broomfield and get on the trail.
Well, it sounds like from Matt that we've got a lot of different options for how to get this funded, and I, I think it's a great, it's a great thing that you got what you got, and thank you to you and Alex for all your work in getting that, and I'm encouraged to see this. I was just talking with someone over the weekend about this little segment of trail and how we were hoping to get it, to get it done, so great work. Alex, anything to add? Or I'm sure more will be forthcoming as we, as we get...
Yeah, it was basically just to make sure that the board was supportive of, you know, we didn't get as much as we wanted to, but I think we believe very strongly that we need to make this connection on our side. You know, the other great thing is, for us, when people come down the bike trail from Broomfield, they're gonna stay on our side of the street and hopefully go to downtown Superior.
Good. Any other announcements?
And that would be the only other thing I had.
Great, thanks.
Quick question, Sandy, when do we have to, if we don't want to go forward with it, when would we have to?
Right now.
Right now.
Pretty much. I mean, the unfortunate thing with the whole TIP process, it was very tight. We reviewed, we had to submit our proposal by, I think it was the 15th of February, and then we, they did all the scoring, and then we actually met on Friday, and they were due to Dr. Cog today.
Gotcha.
So, but we will approve the funding at the Dr. Cog meeting on the fourth Wednesday, and, or third Wednesday, and so if we were gonna withdraw, I'd want us to say right now, so that we would not go through the vetting at the Dr. Cog board meeting.
If it's the third Wednesday, is there any value in talking about this, a retreat next Monday?
We could, but I would feel really bad going back. I mean, we can, and we could always withdraw at the...
I, I like the idea, it just seems very quick to make a $1 million decision.
Yeah.
I think we can't leave money like this on the table, and we're gonna improve our bike paths, and we have, that's one of the things that makes our community so great. So I appreciate Sandy and Alex's efforts to secure the $1 million, and let's leverage that and, you know, build out the trailway, and that's, it's already planned, it's gonna get built. It's stupid to leave money on the table.
Yeah. Okay. Neil?
Thank you.
Sure. Just a couple of quick updates on my part. Welcome back, everybody. It's been a long time since we've been here. On March 14th, I attended the Lewisville Library Board of Trustees meeting. A few quick comments. The city of Lewisville completed their strategic plan. Their last one was from 2013. As a result of that effort, the library staff is developing their own strategic, 2019, 2020 strategic plan. Five key goals. Number one, build community. Number two, promote literacy. Number three, spark imagination and learning. Number four, foster technology proficiency, technological proficiency. Number five, preserve and promote our community's past. So they're working through that. Also, the library is going to be hosting a mural contest that's going to start on May 13th. It's open to kids age 16 to 21 in Boulder County. Murals could be 28 feet wide by four feet tall, so it's gonna be part of the parking structure to the north of the library. On March 25th, I testified to the House Finance Committee in support of Senate Bill 19-181. Luckily, I didn't have to wait too long to testify, and the bill subsequently passed the committee. I have to say that being able to say that our town and our board were unanimous in support of the bill definitely set us apart from some of the other communities. I think it spoke very highly to the message that we wanted to communicate about our feelings towards local control. I'm happy to report, if anyone hasn't heard, the bill made it through committee, made it through the House, made it through the Senate, and it's on the governor's desk waiting for a signature. And then on April 1st, we held the bimonthly Transportation and Safety Committee meeting. No decisions were made at the meeting, but the TSC is going to be better embracing the existing guidelines that we already have as they relate to traffic calming procedures. That's all I have.
Thanks, Neil. Mark?
Good evening. On March 27th here at Town Hall, I attended a meeting with Assistant Town Manager Martin Toth. We met with representatives of Verizon, and the purpose of the meeting was to discuss potential locations and associated challenges with deploying the small cell technology throughout town, and really identifying, one of the things that Verizon had asked us to submit, we had crowdsourced some problem areas in town, and Verizon took that information and compiled a map of, you know, actual dead zones in town and areas where they think that, you know, we really need to deploy the technology. You know, one of the things that was kind of illuminating about this meeting was, you know, the different light poles that we have around town, and, you know, Verizon is really trying to work with us, and they don't want to just go into residential neighborhoods and go around town and deploy, you know, new structures. They want to try to leverage the existing structures to the extent that we have them. Many of the light poles that we have currently in town are 18 feet tall and really not tall enough for them to do what needs to be done, but we've got some, some of the light poles that they already work with, you know, that they've got a use agreement with Excel, will work for their project. But we've got a lot of unique light poles in Superior. We don't have the standard Cobra neck light poles that many communities have. We have these, you know, kind of decorative ones in the Medians, along Rock Creek Parkway, along Colton, and it's one of those things that you don't really notice it until you look for it, and then once you start looking at it, you see that there's a number of challenges. But I just wanted to report that this meeting took place, it's kind of the first step, we were meeting with not only, you know, Verizon representatives, but their engineering team as well. So they're looking at, you know, ways to solve the problem of, you know, cell service here in Superior. I appreciate the fact that they're listening to us and they're working with us, and they certainly appreciate the town working with them, so stay tuned on that, and if Verizon comes back, I certainly encourage the board to attend, attend those meetings. On Monday, April 1st, I attended, along with Trustee List, a Rocky Flats Stewardship Council meeting. As a byproduct of that meeting, this board is gonna be considering just a resolution in support of a motion that Town of Superior is bringing to oppose oil and gas drilling and fracking on and under Rocky Flats. This is a resolution that, an emotion that Superior is bringing, which we hoped would be non-controversial, which is actually turning out to be controversial. So it's my hope that, you know, the town's support behind this motion would be one step along the way of convincing the other players, municipalities, counties, other members of the Rocky Flats Stewardship Council to get behind that motion and to support it, because hopefully we can all agree that drilling and fracking under a super fun site is probably something that shouldn't happen, especially one that's contaminated with plutonium. On April 3rd, I attended the SILC meeting, the Superior Youth Leadership Committee meeting. One of the projects that SILC is doing is cleanup at Autry Park on August 6th, on April 6th, and on April 20th. And actually, to that, to that end, you know, one of the things that they're looking at with Autry Park is the bike, the bike path that Trustee Hamerly mentioned, and it's actually kind of funny that you bring that up today, because I've, I've heard from a number of people who commute at the RTD Park and Ride over by Flat Irons Mall, how that crushed refined path in Autry Park is kind of the last stage of their ability to bike commute to the Park and Ride, that it's not paved, right? So we've got all of these, this network of paved paths, and if people actually want to ride their bike to the Park and Ride, they can do so, but then they hit the crusher refined path, and it's not really pleasant. If they're wearing work clothes, it's kind of a disincentive. So personally, I would get behind 110% paving the bike path along 36, completing the paved path through Autry Park. I think that Autry Park's kind of been an afterthought, and now that we're actually paying attention to it with the bike, the terrain park and the skate park, it could really be just a gem in the town, so I think we should, I think we have budgeted for 2021 in the capital improvement plan in terms of the parks budgeting, but we should look at maybe advancing those budgeted funds and try to pave Autry Park sooner rather than later. I think that that, that path would be a really great addition. Two last things. I wanted to just acknowledge staff and Sandy Hamerly's suggestion to put better planning resources online. We've now got a development application tracking spreadsheet available on the town's website, as well as a map showing approved land use development applications. It's a great resource for anybody who's looking to know a little more information about, you know, what specific project that is, you know, what's going on around town, and it's happening because Sandy made a really great suggestion, and town staff is listening to that suggestion, so thank you, kudos to Sandy. And then lastly, Matt, if you could provide an update to the community, I've heard a number of people concerned about the Rock Creek Flyers swim team and the Monarch Elevation Athletics group that's gonna be using, there seems to be confusion as to whether or not both groups are gonna be at the North Pool, you know, what exactly the status is of, you know, the agreement to use the North Pool. Is there gonna be any change to what the Flyers have kind of known and used with North Pool? If you could just give an update on what the situation is?
Yeah, so Patrick and his staff have been working with both the Rock Creek Flyers and the high school coach for Monarch High School swim team to use the North Pool year round. The cost associated that is paid by the user group, and it was a little too expensive for the Rock Creek Flyers, was my understanding. The high school is interested in doing that and covering the cost, and my understanding is working with Rock Creek Flyers is to include them as part of that use. That's, you know, we, we've had discussions with both groups, and we're not cutting anybody out, we just, the user groups have to cover the cost, and that seems the big, the hurdle for Rock Creek Flyers at this time.
So in the past, the Rock Creek Flyers, we heated the pool, I think later on in the, in the year, in the fall, into the early winter?
Yeah, for one or two months.
Right.
Yeah.
And so now, Monarch and Elevation is gonna kind of take over that, that role, and also in the springtime, is that as well?
Yep, that's my understanding.
Okay. And then in terms of the Rock Creek Flyers using it...
It's about $68,000 a month.
And then Rock Creek Flyers using it during the summer months, is any change there for their access?
Not to my knowledge, no.
I actually have a, I can help a little bit with this, Matt, because I, we did have a discussion about that, this at First Friday. The agreement with Elevation is only for April and May. The Rock Creek Flyers were not able to meet, or if you remember when we did the budget last year, we had a pretty extensive discussion about being able to recover our costs for when the pool was open off-season. So the Flyers will take over the pool for the summer, just like they always do, and they will have the pool, and then there is no agreement in place for the fall with any organization at this point, and I think Patrick's talking to both organizations. Obviously, our preference as a town and as a board is that we will support our local clubs and our local users, so I think that's, Patrick's trying to work with them, but, you know, right now, nothing's decided for the fall.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Kevin?
Sure. A couple meetings, and then I want to comment on the others. I attended the CAPS meeting, amazed how much work this group of volunteers can take on. As some of you, we, there was a reference to it at our work session this evening, there is an RFP on the street for a creative placemaking master plan. The, I think, proposals are due pretty soon, maybe this week, so that, once the selected contractor comes on board for, to the board for approval, I know that committee, that CAPS committee is eager to get started and start working closely with that contractor. So really appreciate the support, Matt, from, from staff and support from the board for that committee. Attended TSC, as Neil referred, little known secret, we actually do have this, this process, these guidelines that exist today around traffic calming and a pretty well-defined process, which to my knowledge, we have not used. We have a new consultant who's helping us communicate that process into a single-page handout that we could share with the community. So we've got a couple of community requests for some traffic calming initiatives, we'll be using that, those guidelines, and really seeing whether or not the process that the board defined a number of years ago actually works. If it doesn't work, we'll consider modifications or additions in the future, but for now, instead of proposing modifications, we're gonna take what we have and see if it works. With apologies, I did miss the, our last meeting, which amazingly was four weeks ago due to illness. I watched the meeting and have a couple of observations. First, it's way easier to be up here than to watch it on TV. It could have been the fever, but I literally found myself raising my hand to vote, so. A second, interesting observation, we have this format to share opinions, what's your opinion, what's your opinion, what's your opinion, and then they're shared and moved on, and, and I'm probably the most guilty of this, but I think maybe we're not as good as listening as we are as good as orating, so I really want to try to be a better listener. It was interesting, you know, there's a lot of actors out there that say they don't watch their own movies, although I'm not sure I believe that, but I don't spend a lot of time watching the videos in a meeting that we're in, and so it was interesting to watch a meeting start to end, and I think as a board, we need to just really be better listeners, spend a lot more time deliberating. If I say something that you disagree with, or you think I have my facts wrong, interrupt. Don't wait for your turn, interrupt. Kevin, no, 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 that's actually not what we talked about a few weeks ago. And then let's make the right decision. So anyway, it was interesting to watch that front to back. With regard to the Flyers, we need to be careful here, right? I mean, there is, I worry a little bit about, first, we don't know what the costs are for heating the pool in the winter months, because we've never done that before, so we have some rough estimate. I just want to make sure that the Flyers board, which is a volunteer board of members of the community, primarily parents, I would assume, you know, they have budgets and they're trying to be good stewards of the, of the organization they oversee, but I am a little worried that maybe we did not send that right message to, that our existing swim community, that we, we could have been flexible and maybe should have worked with them. So I think it's fine that we're working with Elevations or whoever we're working with for a couple of months, and let's see how it works, but to the point earlier, and I think Clint has made this point before, we should really be amenities that we have in the community today, let's take advantage of those amenities to every possible extent. And so if we have a pool and it's, and we could safely heat it and be relatively cost-efficient and come really close to covering our costs, I think we should pursue that. So I'm a little worried that maybe there was a disconnect in some of that communication, and I think we might need to make sure that the Flyers feel like we are partnering with them, and similarly, we want the Flyers to partner with us, and we may need to mend some fences there with that, with that community, so, not just the board, but with the broader community itself. Because I've also got a lot of feedback saying, hey, what happened? Why are we not, why are we not doing the spring splash, or whatever it's called? So, that's it.
Okay, thanks, Laura.
So on the topic of the Flyers, in reviewing the fees that were approved last year, we did differentiate between fees for residents and non-residents for hourly and daily rentals of the pool in the summer. Where we didn't differentiate is for the off-season month rental. We charge the same for residents and non-residents. So I think that's something we may want to consider revisiting to be more consistent across all the fees that we charge. That said, I do want to commend town staff. I know when we put this fee increase in place, my understanding is that we did offer the Flyers to ramp that up over time, rather than saying it goes into effect this year. So I think that was a great effort on the part of our staff to try to make it work for the Flyers, and, you know, it didn't work for them this year, and hopefully it might next year. In terms of meetings, the Transportation and Safety Committee on Monday, April 1st, I won't repeat what trustees Sean Ryan have said, but I do want to make sure that all residents know, the first step in our process to request traffic calming is for you to complete a form that's available on the town website and get signatures from five residents in different homes in the affected neighborhood. Once you do that, we then take that neighborhood under advisement and can potentially proceed with traffic calming measures from there. As Trustee Hamerly mentioned, I did help host, co-host First Friday with her on Friday, April 5th. The topics we covered included the Rocky Mountain Stewardship Council, which is on our agenda tonight, the new roof on the pavilion at Purple Park, noise at Rocky Mountain Airport, speeds on Yarrow and Rock Creek Circle, construction hours for Lantern's Lane, the future of the Tesla dealership... new roof on the pavilion at Purple Park, noise at Rocky Mountain Airport, speeds on Yarrow and Rock Creek Circle, construction hours for Lanterns Lane, the future of the Tesla dealership, the fee increase we've been talking about to open the North Pool, the private groups in the off-season, and, uh, population growth limits for Superior. Um, I would highly encourage, uh, residents to attend First Fridays. It's a great chance to get the pulse of the town, hear what other residents are thinking, and also just chat informally with your elected officials. After First Friday, I headed over to Coal Creek Meals on Wheels to meet with Anna Arias, who had been in, um, a couple of weeks or months ago, um, to discuss how Superior can partner with Meals on Wheels to serve the community. I also got trained to become a driver for Meals on Wheels and I shadowed two of our Superior residents as they served the Louisville and Superior routes. So I mention this because I really want to encourage everyone to get involved. It's a great organization and they're doing a lot of fantastic things to help people right in our community.
Great, thanks, Laura. Ken?
On March 15th, I attended the Historical Commission meeting. Uh, there were a lot of great topics discussed, uh, but of them, the committee had a great conversation relating to the cemetery restoration program. Uh, a lot of good stuff come up on that. Uh, on March 18th, I testified in front of the House Energy and Environment Committee, uh, in favor of Senate Bill, uh, 181. Uh, trustee Shaw already gave a good explanation where that stands. On March 20th, I attended the Prostag meeting. Uh, again, many items were discussed, uh, but one of the most prominent topics was, uh, the topic of public outreach relating to the proposed playground at Riverbend Park. Um, there were probably about a dozen residents from Gibson Court and Kirk Way who attended the meeting in opposition to that location for the proposed playground. Um, most of them were in favor of keeping a more natural park in that area. Uh, Prostag did a really good job of explaining this was very early in the process and that there will be more public outreach, uh, directed to the entire area. Uh, on April 1st, I attended the Rock and Flat Stewardship Council meeting, uh, with Mayor Protem Lasis. And then on April 3rd, I attended the Boulder County Consortium of Cities meeting. Uh, there, we heard a presentation from the Boulder County Regional Housing Partnership. I won't steal any of their thunder tonight. Uh, and then we also heard a presentation from Homeless Solutions for Boulder County. Um, for those in Superior who may be struggling and don't necessarily know about the resources out there, uh, there are some, uh, resources if you are struggling to, uh, to maintain your home or a, a roof over your head. Uh, temporary shelters are available. There's incoming and housing resolutions, and there's also family reunification support out there. So, if there is anybody who needs resources, uh, we've got a lot of great resources in our area. And then finally, we heard a, uh, presentation on the transportation, transportation sales tax projects. We've already finished our projects here in Superior, but it was a great presentation.
Okay, thanks, Ken. I've got a full list of my past meetings on my mayor's Facebook page that I published today. A couple of announcements in addition. This evening, we heard a great concept plan for the downtown Superior development. If you did not have a chance to see that, I would encourage residents to go back and watch the video and then send us comments. And also share it with your friends and neighbors, especially those that are living in downtown Superior. We really want to hear from you and I think the developer wants to hear from you. The, the, um, the cake is going into the oven. So, let's, let's talk to them before it gets fully baked and, and make sure that everyone's ideas and, and suggestions are incorporated. And now is definitely the time to do that. Um, once the final development plan comes to us for approval, it's, it's generally, uh, we can still have some changes at that point, but it's really best to do it earlier in the process than later. Next week is the State of Superior 2019 Manager/Mayor Update. This is the fifth annual event that, um, ma, manager Magley and I have, um, hosted to inform residents of what's going on in town. And events grown in size in attendance each year that we've done it. And I want to thank Brenaleski's Restaurant at the Sports Stable for hosting our space this year again. And they are going to, um, be providing drinks. It's free to attend, um, non-alcoholic drinks, just to clarify. And, uh, it's next Tuesday, April 16th, 12:00 noon. Great way to celebrate the passing of Tax Day the day before. So, um, the full slideshow will be available by PDF of, of what we discuss. And so that'll be available on the town's website, um, next Tuesday. And I encourage everyone to attend. But please register on the Chamber of Commerce's website. And thanks to the Chamber for helping to host the RSVP list for that event. And with that, we're done with announcements from the board. Uh, Matt, anything?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, as trustee Lish mentioned, board retreat is on Monday. I've heard from, got feedback from him on topics. If anybody else has any, um, adds, deletes, comments, just, uh, send those to me by email. That's it.
Okay.
Oh, we have Planning Commission Dinner on Thursday as well, at 6:00 next week.
Yes, thanks. Okay, Dan?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. And Phyllis? All right, very good. All right, next?
I'm sorry, the Planning Commission Dinner's on Thursday?
Yeah.
I see it on my calendar. I, I don't, okay, I may not be able to attend that.
Okay.
Well, it's, anyway, I'll, I'll figure it out.
Well, I, I just want to make sure there are enough of us that can be there because I don't want to be late.
Everybody else want to be there? Okay, we should, we should be good. Just provide us, you know, provide us comments, um, in advance of that. Okay, next, we are up to public comment. And this public comment section is for consent agenda or non-agenda items. If you have public comment and would like to deliver that, uh, we invite you to do so now. Just give a little wave if you'd like to come up and I'll signal you to come up to speak. Yes, go ahead. Just start with name and address and, uh, limit comments to five minutes if you could, please.
Hello, my name is Colleen Callan. I live at 1929 Cedar Ridge Circle in Superior. Um, I would like to say thank you for, all of you for being so proactive with, you know, with the whole fracking thing. And really, that's what I think most citizens want, is they want representatives that go out and really stand up for, for our own best interest, all of us. So, thank you. And I, that was impressive because it happened very quickly and you were very reactive. And I know sometimes threats can be big, like a big fracking well, or they can be invisible, like rocky flats, which is sometimes why it's difficult to get people to understand that threat because you can't see it or smell it. And so it doesn't seem real. And I feel like we have a threat in our town on our green belts with the spraying of the herbicides and the pesticides. And I see the yellow flags out. And it's in the news right now, you know, that bees are now on the endangered species list. When I moved here in 2005, this time of year, our trees were covered with thousands of bees. It horrified me. There were so many bees. Now I go out and there's maybe a few dozen, some trees have nothing. It's, you just don't see them anymore. And we know now that, we know that Monsanto went the round-up, that they lied, that they covered up, they spent billions of dollars to, to make it seem like these things were safe. And so I would like to ask that we stop spraying the herbicides and the pesticides in our green spaces and in the town. I'm not asking to not spray for mosquitoes though, because everything is a cost benefit. And I do feel like there's a place in our society for chemicals and, and for, and for pesticides. But I think that having a few dandelions is not worth the risk. It's in areas where the, our dogs walk, they come into our house, kids are throwing balls down, picking them up, they go home, they don't wash their hands maybe, you know, we're exposing ourselves. And honestly, we don't really know what the risk is. And, and not only is it our health and the health of our environment, which we should all be concerned about, but it's also the workers. You know, if you watch them, they have these backpacks on or they have these big tanks and they're spraying it. A lot of times, it's windy, it's blowing back on them. And I think it's really inhumane to even, as a town, to say, we want our grass to look nice, but we're willing for this risk over here. So I feel like the cost benefit for just spraying for the green belts look nice. And we, and we can have it look nice because Sea Boulder, I think it's been almost 10 years that they went all-natural and their grass looks fantastic. So, I think it's one of these simple things that can have a big impact on our little environment here. Okay, do you have any questions?
Thank you for the comments. Appreciate it. Additional public comment?
Uh, good evening. Um, Diane Marcello, a resident of Rock Creek South. I hope the members of the town board and the staff were present tonight, had enjoyable spring break. I attended First Friday with trustees Hammerly and Sklodzinski last week, uh, where Rocky Mountain Airport was discussed. But I wanted to follow up with the full town board tonight, uh, the staff and the audience, people at home, to inform everyone of some activity from Rocky Mountain Metro during spring break and other related information. Specifically during a 16-hour period on Thursday, March 28th, a Boeing 737 and a Boeing 757 flew over Superior. At 12:28 a.m., a 737-400 departed RMMA en route to Las Vegas. It departed off the north end of the runway, then made a sharp turn to the east and then a circular loop that ended up flying to the southwest. I do not know why this aircraft did not come off to the southeast directly and depart over Jefferson County. Then 16 hours later, a Boeing 757-200 approached low and slow over Rock Creek from the northwest to land at RMMA at 4:27 p.m. Many residents were enjoying the spring afternoon and saw this aircraft, which had departed from Phoenix. Although it was flying due north as it flew over the Denver metro area, um, it flew north of RMMA, made an over 180-degree turn, and then to approach Superior. Again, I do not know why this aircraft did not approach from the south to land on the Jefferson County side of the airport. There were light winds 10 miles per hour out of the northeast. A 757 is not impacted by those light winds. Part of why I want to bring up the 757 is that this aircraft belongs in Airplane Design Group 4, which also includes Boeing 767, DC-8, DC-10, and Airbus 300. This design group is one group larger than Boeing 737. These groups are based on tail height and wingspan. The 1988 Master Plan for RMMA, which is tied to the 1995 Aviation Eastman Agreement, for Rock Creek Ranch, was based on Group 2. The current 2011 Master Plan that RMMA is working off of and which called for the runway reconstruction that was completed in 2014 is based on Group 3. This recent 757 is a Group 4. It's a full design group larger than their current Master Plan was designed around, hence an escalation in the size of the aircraft coming in. Director Paul Anzlo said at last month's Airport Advisory Board meeting that they're expecting, expecting to start a new Master Plan in two years. In addition, he said again that he would like for a terminal to be built with three or four gates for commercial traffic servicing the southwest with 737s for 18 commercial flights a day. Although there have often been statements from members of the town board that Superior does not have influence over RMMA, I would like to recommend two things that our elected officials could do to help gain some influence. First off, have a member of the town board or town staff attend the Airport Advisory Board meetings that are held at RMMA. The meeting scheduled for tomorrow was recently canceled, but per Jeffco's website, the next meeting is scheduled for May 14th at 5 o'clock p.m. in the Mount Evans Room at Rocky Mountain Metro. Secondly, have members of the town board, town manager or staff reach out to Jefferson County Commissioners, Jeffco manager, and also engage our government officials from Boulder County at the same time the discussions are ongoing between the airport consultants who are representing Superior and Louisville. Many of the training in small planes that depart north over Superior fly north and not south, where they could do maneuvers over open space and rocky flats in west of 93. These planes fly north over Louisville, Lafayette, Longmont, and Erie during their maneuvers in eastern Boulder County, not Jefferson County. Lastly, much of the detailed information myself and other residents are pulling up on the aircraft flying over Superior can be found on a free app called FlightAware. You type in BJC, Boy, Jack, Charlie for the airport code for RMMA, and then you can pull up detailed information on the planes after they depart or arrive, such as type of plane, registration, speed, altitude, and the flight path in green. It's a very useful tool. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Cardy-Mullin. I live at 1250 South Boyero Court. Um, I'm here to also say how much I appreciate what you're doing, um, on all of the stuff that you guys do. Um, and I really appreciate your support of wildlife. And, um, last month, I know that, uh, OSAC asked you to make a request to Boulder County for the water levels out at the Hodgson-Harris Reservoir to help support the breeding birds there. And they were a little resistant, I hear. Um, and, but your, your support was heard because they also heard from many other groups and individuals, Audubon, rights of nature, individuals, wildlife specialists. And they finally relented and they lowered the water last Monday as an experiment and created mudflats for these beautiful avocets. Avocets are rare birds in Boulder County. This one here is, I hope they're big enough for you to see, um, is what it looks like. It's elegant. It stands about this high. It has a bill that goes out slightly curved up and it, um, is very sharp and it pokes. This individual, the individual one, as soon as those mudflats, they lowered the water on Monday, on Thursday, the first avocet in Boulder County was spotted on that mudflat. And that's a picture of it. And it was so happy. It was going around just, you know, foraging around for all the crustaceans and everything because everything had been underwater. So it was like, just, you know, hitting a, a great dinner. Um, and then two days later, uh, we had our first birding tour out there for the, the breeding bird study. And we had 24 people with binoculars looking out at the water. And it's like we planned this. All of a sudden, two of them came soaring in, landed right in front of us, maybe like, you know, 30 feet away on the mudflats. And we're like, oh my gosh. And they were just foraging and just moving around, going in the water, um, in and out of, there were about 60 other little ducks, actually they were bigger than them, sleeping in the water. So they were just going in and out happily, in and out, um, eating. And they all decided to then take a nap. So these two just sat down and we all went on our way. We were just thrilled that they had come back. And about, uh, when we were all done, about two hours later, I went over and just looked at them and one of the sleeping avocets jumped up with its bill and decided to get territorial because that's what they start to do when they want to nest. So, all these other ducks that are just sitting like decoys along the edge of the water are sleeping. And this avocet comes with this sharp bill and starts poking them. And they're just flying away on, on top of the water like frantically. It's like, what was that? It just woke them up out of, out of nowhere. And it was just like, just having a ball, just like, like popping balloons, just getting them to, to go away. So, that doesn't sound very nice, but if you had somebody coming at you with a, a long knife like that, I'm sure you would be, you know, like startled out of your sleep and run too. So, you never know what you're going to see out of the reservoir. It's a natural nature sanctuary. There's always something fun. And I'd love to invite all of you to come out, especially the all of you that have kids, to come out and join us on a, on a nice day, um, to, to come and see what's going on. As I came here, I decided I had a few minutes. I'd stopped over. Two pelicans had arrived. Um, they were not there earlier in the day. And so, there's always something going on. And these, the reason that avocets, um, are kind of special is they're a rare bird in Boulder County. We used to have a lot of them. We used to have a lot of them. And they're a concern right now. So our HHR is one of the few places that has habitat for them, the mud flats. And in 2017 and 2018, the water was raised and we had the weather, the snows and the rains that impacted it so that they were flushed out, so they couldn't be in. So this year is an experiment. Boulder County is working with the naturalists and doing it to see how they do. And if they are successful, and we're hoping that they are, then they'll keep it going. So we'll just have to see. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, move on to presentations. First, we have an advisory committee interview this evening. And Colin Duncan?
Colin Duncan, who has applied for the Superior Youth Leadership Council, is here tonight.
Yeah, Colin, come on up and maybe do a brief introduction of yourself. And if you have any questions from the board, we appreciate your interest in the Superior Youth Leadership Council. So thank you for applying.
Thank you for being here. I'm Colin Duncan. I live at 1820 Eldorado Circle. I'm a sophomore at Fairview High School. I wanted to join the Superior Youth Leadership Committee, which some of you visited. Thank you for that also. Just because I'm 16. I grew up in Superior. I love the town to death. I've gone through the school system, Superior Elementary, Eldorado for middle school. I do flyers. I do tennis programs for the town. I'm a lifeguard for the town. And I just want to do what I can to help, help the town. And I think the Youth Leadership Committee gives, is a great place for teens to express their opinions and like give their perspective as a teen in Superior.
Very good. Thank you for that introduction. We'll take any questions from the board. Kevin?
Colin, welcome. I understand you've been attending these meetings even though you weren't an official member. Do I have that right?
Yes, yeah, about five months.
That's pretty cool. So one of the things we struggle with is transparency and engagement with the community. And that's community that are adults, right? But we also struggle with engagement of the youth. Any suggestions on how we as a town board might better engage some of your colleagues and maybe be better listeners, kind of a theme you'll hear from me tonight?
I think the committee, first of all, is a great place. Obviously, you have to like apply and come to the meetings to be a voting member. But that's a great place to like express your opinions as a teenager. Or just having a committee of teenagers that know a whole network of other teenagers in Superior or just youth in general and can kind of get feedback from that demographic in the town by way of just speaking or survey or social media. I think that's.
Great. Thanks.
Colin, thank you. I serve as the board liaison to Silk, so I've seen you at the meeting. So I appreciate the fact that you're here and you're volunteering. One of the questions that we always have for the members who want to be on Silk is, you know, it's really difficult for us. We're all a bunch of old guys and gals here sitting on the dais. And we don't necessarily know what teens really want, right? And what Superior really needs. And like, what would you think is an amenity that you'd like to see, you know, we deliver to town? Like, what is really lacking from a kind of teen perspective?
I would say I feel like some things teenagers, kids my age or even youth would want, maybe like go to Boulder or Lewisville or other communities around if they wanted to do something. I feel like specifically like recreation. I feel like Superior is great at that. But some more options. I don't know specifically what, but more options. And I think, I know, I go to Fairview. I know like friends that are... People in Boulder, they all have like their meetup spots, like Pearl Street, 29th Street. Maybe just like a social, more social place, because right now it's Safeway. A more like social kind of teenager hangout spot, I would say, is telling this town.
And one follow-up question. What do you feel about the number of events? You know, so independent of kind of like an actual place to go, what do you think about the events that we put on? Do you think we should be doing more of that, less of it? Or are you doing the right amount?
I'm 16 and I've lived in Superior my whole life. And I always go to the movie in the parks and the Fourth of July Parade, Chili Fest, all those things. Maybe like as the generations, the newer generations come, those things won't appeal as much. But I'd say getting out on social media would be a huge thing just because kids my age spend 90% of their time on their phones. And food always gets people. Yeah. Beyond that. Yeah, activities. So Youth Leadership Council is discussing, I think, a kickball tournament during the Fourth of July Parade. So that'll probably get people to come around.
Great. Well, Colin, thanks for your interest in the committee. And we appreciate your attending the meetings even before you were, you know, had a spot open. So we appreciate that. One final follow-up question that I always ask every applicant for every committee and commission is, you have any potentials for conflict of interest? Like you might own a side business doing teen programming or something like that that might somehow benefit from this appointment?
Yeah. I don't know about that.
Okay, okay. Most people's.
I just think it'll provide me with good leadership opportunities. I mean, obviously, college application.
Yes.
But no.
Okay.
To that extent, I don't think so.
Okay. And Laura has one more question.
Colin, one final question. You mentioned social media. I know for some of us, that may mean something different than it means to you. So I'm curious, which specific channels do you and your friends tend to use?
I follow the Town of Superior account on Instagram. I don't know if anyone else does. But I know on different social media websites, you can like promote posts to a certain area.
So meaning, do you use Instagram more, Snapchat, Facebook, something I don't know about?
All of the above.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know the specifics of it. But I know you can like promote things to like get ads on those. I don't know like how that would work at all. But I think in general, social media would be a huge platform to promote those things.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks again. And we'll be acting on this at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next presentation this evening is Boulder County Housing Presentation. And we have Frank Alexander from Boulder County and Kristin Heiser from City of Boulder. Welcome.
Sir Frank, we've got Martin coming to help you out.
Matt, do you want to say anything before we get started?
Yeah, we've been working, the Boulder County managers have been meeting, just we've met twice this year already to discuss affordable housing in the county and the ways we can work together to achieve the goal that was set two years ago, I think it was, now 2016. And Boulder and Longmont are, you know, have the biggest impact when it comes to affordable housing and the needs there. But every community can help in different ways. And it doesn't have to be necessarily projects. It could be funding or programs or other methods that we've discussed. And we've lately been talking about ways to achieve the funding that's needed to fund these programs and the projects that are needed to help us with affordable housing. And Frank and Kristin are here tonight to give a presentation on what we've been talking about and potentially a ballot measure in 2019 or 2020.
Okay, trustees, thank you. And Mayor, thank you for having us. We really appreciate it. My name is Frank Alexander. I'm the director of the Boulder County Department of Housing and Human Services and the executive director of the Boulder County Housing Authority. And Kristin and I are both members of the Steering Committee of the Boulder County Regional Housing Partnership. And today, we're here to really just give you an update of the work that's happened. The summit actually occurred in September of 2017. Nine jurisdictions have adopted a resolution supporting the plan and its five strategies, one of which includes a goal to make 12% of our housing stock permanently affordable by 2035. The only remaining jurisdiction is the town of Erie. And we're actually on the board meeting for that in first week of May. I think one of the things that has been really obvious and critical in the work that we've done over the last several years, if you recall, the Consortium of Cities really directed a staff team from many jurisdictions to come together and develop a regional plan. It took about a year between 2016 and 2017 that was then promoted in draft form throughout the community for about seven or eight months and then was presented at the Regional Housing Summit in fall of 2017. And in the work that we've done, it has been incredibly clear that this is the number one issue that our residents are discussing and concerned about in the region. It has been the number one presented issue for resident concern in every scientific poll that's been done over the last couple of years. And there's broad, I'd say, political will for us to move forward and make a difference in the access to and availability of a diverse housing stock within which our communities can age well and live well. I think what's a little less clear is exactly what to do next, what steps to take. And it's a bit of our job as staff, both on the Steering Committee as well as in each jurisdiction, to kind of move through that highly democratic, engaged process with the community. So one of the issues that we've been really working on has been the question of a ballot initiative that would bring revenue in to support the expansion of affordable housing in the region. There was a push to basically debate that opportunity for the 2019 ballot or the 2020 ballot, sort of in short order. I'd say at this point, this is our third elected official meeting, plus the consortium meeting that occurred last Wednesday. I'd say the tide has leaned us to 2020 is just a bit too much of a push for us to get to and that 2020 is a much better opportunity for us to consider a ballot initiative. So we just kind of wanted to put that out right away. And the rest of the presentation is really to give you an update on how we've gotten to where we are currently and all the work that's happened, including the work with the community.
Thank you, Frank. So good evening. I'm Kristin Heiser. I'm actually the deputy director of Housing and Human Services for the City of Boulder, as well as being a part of the Boulder County Regional Housing Partnership. I'm going to go through pretty quickly just a presentation that some of you might have seen bits and pieces of over the years, just to let you, just to talk about affordable housing need across the region, as well as how the partnership has developed and what we've been up to the last few years. We are going to step a little bit into the results of the polling so you can understand and hear about the perspectives of the public that we heard from in December. So really, first, I want to just really ground us in the need. And I think we're all very familiar with the affordable housing challenges, not just of Boulder County, but the entire metro region of this Denver area. And when it comes down to numbers, what we know is that 54% of renters are cost burden, meaning they pay more than 30% of their area, of their income on housing costs. And of that 54%, you have 15,000 individuals or households who are paying more than 50% of their income each month on their housing costs. And that's, that comes at the cost of healthcare and recreational activities and just having to make really difficult choices in one's life. What we've seen over the past few, I mean, since 2010, is that we've seen our housing costs just escalate tremendously across the county. Our housing, when it comes to the average home sales price, prices have jumped between 41% here in Superior, all the way in Longmont, they've jumped 76% since 2010. Also, we're seeing rising costs when it comes to rent. In Superior here, we have 38% of a rental jump in the rental for a three or a two-bedroom apartment. And then moving on just really quickly, so the regional housing strategy, I think several of you attended the summit and have been following this process as we've gone through this last couple of years. We feel that the goals and the strategies that we're presenting are very doable because we, in Boulder County, we have a great history of partnership and of revenue sharing and partnering and talking and lifting our initiatives together. And where we really experienced that was in the floods of 2013. As a result of that, we had the opportunity to come together following the floods to figure out how to recover the housing that was lost or impacted. And we had the opportunity to sit down and say, you know what? We want to bring 1,000 units on. And we need to leverage the resources necessary to create those units in three years. We did that. We brought on 3, 1,000 new units, leveraging about $25 million in federal resources. And so that gave us the confidence, if we can do it in the following of the flood, we can do it moving forward. And so a group of us that had worked on that, represented by Longmont, City of Boulder, County, as well as our housing authorities, got together to draft the regional housing strategy. And we started with identifying that what really launched and made it work for the flood recovery activity was establishing a regional goal, identifying that 1,000 units to be achieved in three to five years. And we hit it in three years. And so I'll dive into a little bit deeper in each of these. But then we also identify that, of course, to reach any goals, we have to bolster the financial resources. And so we are doing a lot of work to identify new opportunities for us to bring additional resources to the region to address our affordable housing needs. And then we kind of round out the plan and the strategy with a variety of tools that we present to our different communities, whether it's securing land and redevelopment opportunities, preserving affordability, and considering regulatory processes that facilitate the creation and preservation of affordable housing. And, you know, all of these things, the way that the report is written that you see in front of you, the strategy, it's meant to be a menu. There's a lot of things that are going to work in Superior that you're not going to find work in Nederland. And what's happening in City of Boulder looks very different in City of Longmont. So it's really intended to be a tool that is giving us all the direction to head towards the shared goal that we'll chat about in a second, but to then give each of us our own map to figure out how we're going to get there. So going back to the goal, what we landed on, looking at population projections and build-out rates, is that we would like to secure, and nine of the jurisdictions have adopted this county goal, is to secure 12% of all residential properties across the county as permanently affordable by 2035. And these are round numbers that we landed on a few years ago. And you'll see in a minute that this is kind of constantly changing because the number of housing units change every year. But essentially, right now, we have a little over 6,000 deed-restricted, permanently affordable units across the county. That's both rental and ownership. It's serving a span of 30, 0% to 120% area median income. It's new construction and it's preservation opportunities. And so to reach our 12% goal by 2035, we need an additional 12,000 units to hit 18,000. And again, this would require new construction, preservation, rental, and ownership, meeting a range of incomes from this, the work of the partnership is focused on 30 to 100%, 120%. So hitting that middle income group as well.
Okay. And I already mentioned the communities that are in support of the plan and the passage of the plan. And I think one of the things that we just wanted to highlight was just the question of having a regional conversation around affordable housing and coming together in different ways has opened up an enormous amount of creativity in the region. So we've seen new public-private partnerships. We've seen new land acquisitions. We've seen new preservation opportunities. We've seen new funding opportunities. And the plan also, for those of you that are sort of familiar with National Association of Counties, was actually awarded the Best in Class Award across the country last year for its sort of visionary approach to looking at affordability and housing. We've also been heavily involved in some of the state legislation in this year's session around expanding resources for affordable housing. So you've seen a proposal to double the state low-income housing tax credit. That's been a really important tool in the funding post the flood. So just the partnership work has begun to unleash creativity that we're really, really excited about and look forward to more conversations with you all here in Superior about what are the opportunities that you have here to expand your diverse housing stock. stock.
So, this is just to give you an idea of the structure of how the partnership is working. Essentially, there's an advisory committee that's made up of staff, who are the worker-bees, were the ones who are planning summits and coming and doing presentations all around the region. And then, there's a steering committee that's made up of the city of Boulder, the county, as well as Longmont, because we've all financially contributed to the development of the strategy and this work. And then, we have two committees, the Policy and Regulatory Subcommittee, as well as a Finance Development Subcommittee. And that's one of the asks that we're making of our regional partners, the different jurisdictions, is to find opportunities for your staff, your planning staff. We also have a Communications Committee to be able to commit a bit of time to participate in these committees and lift this work with us. But where we really see you and the public engaging in this opportunity is we have the champions, which are elected officials, and then the ambassadors. And so, as this work is moving forward, we're going to be coming back to you time and time again, saying, hey, help us spread the word, help us get the ideas out there about affordable housing, help us lift our communications plans and carry this forward. And so, that's where you'll be asked to engage over time. Just a real quick timeline, really the main thing to point out here is that we're spending from 2017 to now, we've really been building up the capacity of the partnership, we're staffing it, we're bringing in financial resources, we're doing the groundwork and doing the research to figure out what are the financial tools that we don't already have available to us? What does a real estate transfer tax look like in the region? What does ballot measure? What would that appear to be? Do we need to do polling? All those sorts of things, as well as we're continuing across the region to look at regulatory processes. City of Longmont has, in the last year, has adopted a new inclusionary, or re-adopted their Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, they've adopted an expedited Development Review Process, city of Boulder adopted an ADU ordinance, Nederland is looking at its own processes as well, and it's happening across the region, that everybody's really looking at how we are going to continue to bring about affordable housing options for our community that are no-cost options, really. It's really trying to figure out how to do that as well. And then, finally, we're really, once we get into 2020, then we go into full implementation of the strategy and moving forward. And as of, this is this year's metrics, this is metrics for success from 2018. So, this is where you see the numbers vary a little bit, and this has to reflect on the fact that the goal is set on the current housing units that are currently available, and every year, we're building more. So, in order to hit the 12% goal, right now, we have 6,600 units that are permanently affordable, and that we would like to bring on 20, over a little, over 20,000 or half 20,000 in total by 2035, and that's across the region. And again, I just want to stress that that is, you know, new construction opportunities, whether it's rental or new homeownership opportunities, but it's also finding opportunities to acquire properties and preserve them as permanently affordable. That's really the best approach for middle-income housing activities. And then, last year, across the region, we invested 9.8 million, which leveraged about 46 million across the region. We brought 800, about almost 900 units into the pipeline. We brought on 219 units last year. We're working on our preservation activities, and then there's a listing of the regulatory processes that we approached and adopted last year across the county. I'm going to just keep moving on, so do you want to talk about the...
Sure. I think the, this was just an example of all that's been happening. So, there's been tremendous, you know, effort and support in different jurisdictions across the community in bringing on new housing. So, we've already, just since the formation of the partnership, 526 units have been added, plus 1,200 more in the pipeline, and you've seen jurisdictions passing the 12% goal, as well as Boulder just passed the 15% goal in the last, in the last week. Here's an example in Nederland. So, for those of you that are familiar with Nederland, we just got financing support from Colorado Housing Finance Authority to build. It seems small for bigger towns and cities, but in Nederland, this was the largest affordable housing home community in the town. 26 units were just funded, fully funded, and in this particular case, a full 15% of the town's residents came out in support of the community being developed in front of the town board with support. And one of the things we launched at that time as a partnership was the Home Wanted Campaign, which, these are all Nederland residents working in the town that are in need of housing, and this campaign is underway and will be coming to your community where residents are really stepping up and telling their stories as teachers, as firefighters, as workers, as single parents, as business owners, as employers, and the struggles that the economic vitality and the health of the community is experiencing as a result of the lack of accessible and affordable, and affordable housing. Here's some of the pretty amazing structures that have all launched, sort of in the post-regional plan work. So, Jamestown has launched a land use and housing advisory committee. Boulder has launched a housing advisory board, peak-to-peak, has launched a Housing and Human Services Alliance across the peak-to-peak region. Northwest Chamber Alliance has taken on affordable housing as its, one of its top three priorities in conjunction with transportation and workforce development, and that's a coalition of three major chambers. We've also seen Broomfield join in the work, and the Louisville Business Forum has supported the work as well. So, a lot of new coalitions are forming, a lot of new creativity is underway. So, the next step was really, part of the work with the jurisdictions was a desire for us to sort of test the voter appetite, support for additional funding, additional funding measure to support the implementation of the plan, what that would look like. We conducted an extensive scientific poll across the region between December 2nd and December 12th of 2018. The polling measured both sales tax increase of .185 and .365, which raised funding for 200 homes a year, up to 400 homes per year, and also a property tax of 1.25 mils, which was $50 on the average $500,000 home, funding 200 homes a year, or a 2.5 mil increase funding 400 homes per year. And the polling came back really positive, but not quite at the level where you would have a slam dunk on the ballot. So, 55 to 60% of likely voters supported the different, the different opportunities. Usually, we like to see polling at this time be 60% or above, which is part of the, part of the need for us to continue to educate the community on affordable housing. And our goal over the next 18 months is really to like focus on building public will, support the other strategies in the plan, really continue to build coalitions with the business community, the employer community, and hospitals, churches, the school districts, all of whom have come to us with really deep concerns about the lack of accessible housing, both for the families that they work with and their workforce in the region.
So, here's just, we'll just keep this real high-level, but I think the main point from this slide is that the polling confirmed what we've all been hearing all along in our community surveys and the different studies we've done over the last few years, is that affordable housing is a real deep concern of our community. And then, what we're finding is that people are recognizing that housing is getting to the point of, that it's not accessible, that it's not attainable to many of the people in our community, whether it's middle-income families or working households, or even people are commenting that, that they know somebody who had to leave because the housing is just no longer available to them and to meet their needs. And then, this survey just continues on to show just that, they do say that there is a role for local government to play a role and to start looking at whether it's community programs, they seem to really resonate with the idea of developing sweat equity programs, which is like a Habitat for Humanity-type program, or streamlining development processes to reduce costs for affordable housing. So, while we were testing around possible taxing increases, it's also, we're getting the message loud and clear that we have to come up with those no-cost options as well. But what this demonstrates is that, so it was about a 15-minute poll, and there were 600 polls that were done across the region or the county. And just within those 15 minutes, what we found is that when somebody, when they started, the first question out the gate was about, would you be in favor of a tax or not, or in those different amounts that Frank was detailing. But by the end of the study, after talking about affordable housing and just really exploring this, in both cases, they saw an increase of support for this, for some sort of tax option to help address the affordable housing needs of our community. So, one thing that we'll be doing, we had a 20, in 2017, we had the Housing Summit, and so, we are going to be hosting that again come September. We are going to have a two-year anniversary of the first Housing Summit, and so, in between now and then, we're going to be going out and meeting with our partners across the region, continuing to build the coalitions and collaborations that Frank was alluding to. But then, this is where we'll want to bring together all the leadership from across the region, whether it's town councils, city councils, as well as leadership from each of the jurisdictions to come and continue to talk about this issue and how to move it forward. And in the meantime, we will be launching in greater, with greater intention, the Communications Plan to really raise awareness around affordable housing, what it means, who lives in affordable housing. So, it's just going to dispel some of the myths that are out there and just get it so we're able to talk about it easily and continue to raise awareness about it and possible actions in the future. So, here's just, you know, we do plan to work with the public to educate, educate and de-stigmatize the issue of housing for all, working with employers to create pathways for resourcing and problem-solving, as well jurisdictions to collaborate on housing issues. And with that, we're going to close it.
Yeah, we're happy to answer any questions you might have about where we're at, the work we've done, or concerns you have, thoughts?
Okay, we appreciate the information. We're going to, we are going to be talking about this further at our retreat next week and hope that we can develop some more concrete plans on our end about how we can participate. I've met with you when I got elected, shortly after I got elected in 2014 or 15, and felt then and continue to feel now that Superior is behind the game when it comes to participating in regional housing opportunities, and we need to be a better regional player. I mean, the last graphic is a little bit disappointing that we're the only city in the county that doesn't have anything, and we need to, we need to change that. So, that's the mayor's view. Hopefully, the board will support that. So, other questions, comments?
I've got a few questions, I apologize. I think it's a great program. I'm also a numbers guy, so you'll have to bear with me.
Yeah.
You referenced the area median income. What is that for Boulder County?
Do you know what I'm talking about?
For feeling for, I think it's about 50, or which one are you going? I'll go, you go.
Yeah. I thought about bringing the AMI tables with me. It's about $85,000, $84,000 for a family, a family of four.
Okay, so then, I think part of the way the pool works is up to 120% of that qualifies for the second bucket.
Yeah, so one of the biggest things in, in the work that we've done is really the concern of middle-income individuals about being able to buy homes. So, you know, when we first tested how to use additional resources, a lot of it was about assisting people with down payment assistance, helping provide affordable homebuyer opportunities that would be more like attached dwellings, townhomes, condos that would, that would support the younger workforce moving in and remaining here. But yes, that would be up to 120% of the area median income.
All right, and then, one thing, I struggled with all the documentation, understand the money flow.
Yes.
Part of, just to understand the background of my question here, is Gallagher is out there, anything that's property tax-based reflects, you know, ultimately, there's going to be a downgrade, you know, at some point when the assessment goes up, and already the assessment's going to go for 20, or rather, the RAR is going to go down from 2019 to 6.95. So, is the anticipation that there's going to be a reserve to kind of buff it against some of that? And kind of walk me through how that works, you know, over like, say, the next five years? You know, as that ebbs and flows, and, you know, the number of houses goes up, but the relative amount coming from each one may go down, how do you maintain sort of the funding level? And then, how does that funding get back to the communities? Does this town need to potentially create a way to administer the funds, or does that get distributed back?
So, I'll, so...
It's like more than one question, I apologize.
Yeah, I know, and I'll try to touch on each of those pieces, but I think a lot of that remains to be seen.
Okay.
I mean, so we have part of the proposal that we were happy to come back and talk in more detail, is how the funds would be distributed. And one of the places where we landed most recently is that to distribute it across the region, it would be probably, you know, possibly a mechanism that would be sitting at the county, that there would be representation from all the jurisdictions. Those are the mechanics that we haven't really nailed down, but really, what we would like to do is distribute it so that the, right now, we're looking at a population distribution, so based on population, that each community would receive a certain amount of funding, like 75% of the funding would be set aside for each community to receive what they want.
Okay.
And so, you could use it how you want, you could give it to the county, you know, there's a lot of different ways to expend those dollars. We do want to set aside a pot of funds that would be more for programming, so in addition to the down payment assistance from Frank was talking about, one of the things that's really important for families to, or households to be able to stay in their homes is homeowner rehab dollars. So, some sort of small grant or loan that they're able to make repairs to their home. And another program is also helping people with homebuyer education, so getting kind of prepared to be a homebuyer and a homeowner. And so, we would like to set aside a small pot of money that would be used for regional programming that each of the jurisdictions would have access to.
Okay.
And then, when it comes to the sources, you know, again, I think that remains to be seen. We do have a couple obvious sources that we're looking at when we're talking about property and sales tax and things of that sort, but really, we want to diversify the sources. We understand that it's not just going to be a tax. So, we, you know, conversations that we've had across the county are mentioning luxury sales taxes, or second home tax, or things of that sort, or real estate transfer tax. I mean, I know there's state legislation and work that has to go into that sort of activity, but we really want to diversify the many options that we could bring in to help us leverage.
Yeah, I know that helps, because I think I read this with the assumption that it was going in the direction of property tax. Superior, as you probably know, has the highest mil levy of all the counties or all the jurisdictions within Boulder County. 3% isn't materially significant here, it's, you know, 150 bucks, as you said, but in the context of Superior already has 105 mil levy, you know, Gumbrell's like 87, you know, it's, we're not necessarily equitable. But I do like the discussion around going down the paths of, you know, other sources. So, my last question is really, and I apologize, maybe I should know this, but across the state, are other communities looking at funding these types of opportunities this way? Has it been working? I know Denver's been talking on and off forever, but I'm curious whether or not this has been successful elsewhere, or, and if it's not Colorado, outside of Colorado?
I mean, I would say, yes, the conversation is happening all across Colorado. I, just last year, I was at a conversation in, on the Western Slope, and they were having the exact same conversations in the, and what we were discussing there is there is, is there a possibility of state-level action around the real estate transfer tax and how the Western Slope and the Front Range could work together to lift that? So, there are conversations that are going on.
But no one's actually implemented any...
Nobody has implemented that. But I mean, we're all kind of taking bites at it in different ways. The city of Boulder has an Inclusionary Housing Program that creates cash, provides cash flow and onsite housing. Boulder County Housing Authority uses the, which tax, like, which tax did you use for the...
The MRS6, no?
Well, that.
And Worthy Cause?
The Worthy Cause.
Yeah.
And so, there's a variety of different ways to do it. Denver was, it was interesting, because it was a couple of years ago that their mayor made this a high priority, and he identified quite a large sum of money to set aside to lift that program. But there, we're in, all of these communities are working together in these conversations. So, in a couple of weeks, I'm meeting with Westminster and Broomfield to talk about how we can work together to really figure out, kind of crack this nut together and figure out how to do this, so.
Yeah, and I would add a group called Colorado Counties Acting Together, worked with Representative Becker and a bipartisan Senate and House Commission to launch a stakeholder process to develop several bills that are before the legislature this year around the Housing Trust Fund, around expanding state low-income housing tax credit investments, as well as the development of a long-term commission, like a Blue Ribbon Commission around affordable housing, and that's been really tremendous. We've also been working closely with Denver. They have about a 50-point strategy for expanding affordable housing, and it's really dramatically changing the thinking and their approach in the metro area. We've also had a lot of outreach from other communities that want to join the plan, would love to consider how to join the plan, and we've seen in other communities in other states that we've been working with, some tremendous opportunities that are, that are aligning there as well. So, Seattle notably, if you saw King County's regional plan, it's, they actually interviewed us post the development of our plan. Their plan is, in a sense, an upgrade in terms of a deeper level of political will, frankly, around the plan after it was drafted. And I think you saw the Microsoft investment of $500 million in affordable housing in the King County region, and sort of as a result of the work on that plan, and that's just one, one community example. So, I think we've seen the issue being elevated nationally. I think, one thing I think that's hard for folks to understand is while we've seen the growth of the homeless problem for individuals and families across the United States, if you really look at the percentage of affordable housing stock that we have in the country, we really have a housing problem. We don't have a homelessness problem, we have an accessible housing problem, and we tend to not think of housing as part of the infrastructure of our community. We don't think of it like we think of road... We don't think of it like we think of roads or schools or hospitals or healthcare systems. And if any of you have tried to find a place for your parents to live or your children to live in any one of our communities, there's almost no affordable, accessible senior housing that's available. Very difficult for entry-level family housing, very difficult for workforce housing. So when you speak to your chambers, you know, our local businesses, our independent businesses are finding it really difficult to recruit employers based on the lack of housing. So partly, our, our work in talking to so many people has just been understanding housing differently, right? It's, it's just part of who we are and it's not affordable and it's not those people who are experiencing it across the income and across the lifespan.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Other questions?
One quick question. So thank you very much, by the way, for coming here tonight. And I, I don't think you find anybody in our area that argues that this isn't a, a issue and a challenge for all of the county. As I was reading through the memo about the ballot measure, there was one, one section that caught my eye that I'd like you to help me understand how I can describe to our residents why it's a good idea for it to be in there. And it, it states that to ensure the highest and best use of funds, in addition to the jurisdictional distribution, it is proposed that the partnership leadership maintain the flexibility, if agreeable to the majority, to forego jurisdictional allocations at any time to support a singular project serving the regional goals of the partnership. So in asking for us to sign a resolution of support, there's a possibility that the money might not come back into our specific community here. Help me, help me explain to my residents why I should be pushing for them to pay into this tax when we might not see it directly here in our jurisdiction?
Yeah, well, I think first, the, I think the main point of that is in any given year. So in, in managing regional funds, what we actually try to do is average it over a little bit more time because housing is complicated and it's expensive. So for instance, if we were, if we were focused on building a significant residential community here with a number of homes, you would disproportionately need an amount of the regional funding in that particular year. We have a lot of experience doing this with the funds that we currently manage from the federal government, as well as the funds that we've managed in the post-flood world. So I'd say the way that we would think of that would be more like over a rolling year of averages, that the distribution would be equitable. But in each year, it would be project, it would be project-specific. And I think more and more detail of that can be provided to you as, as we get closer to a ballot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything further from the board? Anything Lisa had a public comment she wanted to deliver?
Hi, Lisa Ritchie, city resident on Riverbend. I think this is exciting work and I just really want to challenge this board. Boards in the past have come up with every excuse to not meet our obligation as a community. This is hard. This is not easy, it requires a lot of work. And we have to be at the table much more than we've been in the past. And I think to ignore this problem, you know, from a, these folks have been very, very gracious not calling us out, I think the mayor recognized it. Hopefully, some of the new board members recognize it, that Superior has zero is disgraceful. And there are no excuses that that should be acceptable, none, none, no excuses. We have an obligation to our residents, we have an obligation to the residents that live here now, we have an obligation to the folks who work here. We have schoolteachers, we have firefighters, we have folks in this community who cannot afford to live here. And we have an obligation to be a good regional partner and to help meet that need. It is really easy to come up with excuses and I think the time for excuses from the board should be over. And I really hope that at your retreat next week, you all challenge yourselves, not rely solely on the regional partnership, but look at what you guys can do. You look at Nederland added housing within the last few years, Longmont's adding housing all the time, Boulder's adding housing all the time. Little communities, big communities, everybody but us. And it's really easy to look at this and say, oh, you know, they'll kind of take care of it for us. That should not be the solution. We need to be at the table, we need to be coming up with our own ordinances, our own ways of solving this problem, not only relying on these groups. So please, get to the table on this issue, we are behind, thanks.
Thanks. Any additional public comment on this? Okay, anything further from the board? All right, thank you both for your, the information and the presentation, thank you. All right, we're on to our consent agenda. Item number three, we've got consent agenda A through G. I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda A through G.
So moved?
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Laces, seconded by Trustee Lish. All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
We're going to read the proclamations.
Yeah, why don't we read the proclamations? Do you want to take Arbor Day?
I'll take Arbor Day.
And I'll read the complete count campaign.
This is a proclamation of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Superior declaring April 27, 2019 Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our community increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. The Town of Superior hereby proclaims April 27, 2019 as Arbor Day.
Great, thanks, Mark. Our next proclamation is for the 2020 Colorado Complete Count Campaign. Whereas the United States Census determines the allocation of seats for the United States House of Representatives, redistricting of state and local government district boundaries and the distribution of more than $675 billion in federal funds to state, local and tribal governments. And whereas the state of Colorado, Governor John Hickenlooper, signed into executive order which established the 2020 Colorado Complete County Count Campaign. And whereas the 2020 Colorado Complete Count Campaign shall promote and advertise the 2020 Census, respond to the population's questions and concerns about the Census, focus resources on hard-to-count areas and populations and ensure the highest participation rate possible. And whereas the Complete Count Committee should address various racial, ethnic, cultural and geographic considerations to the community to ensure residents understand the Census process, trust in its confidentiality and understand its importance and fulfill their obligations to prepare as it is required by law. And whereas Superior is a growing town and accurate demographics will help the Town of Superior gain understanding of the town as well as plan for the future. And whereas the Town of Superior wishes to support the 2020 Complete Count Campaign. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and trustees do hereby recognize and support the 2020 Colorado Complete Count Campaign. And on this note, I will be chairing the Superior's Complete Count Committee and would welcome anyone who's interested in volunteering for this group. And we'll have more information forthcoming. But if this idea of the 2020 Census is of interest to any residents, please contact me and I'd love to get you involved in this unique opportunity. It only comes around every 10 years, it's kind of like an eclipse, so get on board. That's right. All right, next on our agenda is 3H, which Ken.
Yeah, I have a few questions about this. First, I, I think there was an error in the agreement. For task number five, it identifies it as sixty-six, or 60% design. I believe it should be 90% design. So I think that might be something we just need to get fixed in the agreement. But then specifically, Alex, getting into task number seven, the construction phase services. My understanding of reading this is Duberry will be acting kind of as an advisory consultant in this phase overseeing the construction of the project. Is that kind of correct?
No, they'll be, they'll be.
Well, he's looking at the bid.
They'll be observing the construction, be available for any design issues that come up from the, from the contractor. So it's typical during the, the construction process that you have weekly or monthly meetings and they attend and review cementals and so forth. So that's, that's their role during construction. They do observation and are available to answer any, any questions during construction.
Do they take the lead for the most part? Are they working in conjunction with, with you and your team? Who's taking the lead and they're working at your?
Well, they'll be, they'll be the designer, we'll be the owner representative. So we'll be looking at, you know, any dollar impacts of any, of any changes that occur of anything that the town would want in terms of operations and so forth. So it'll be a partnership between the contractor, the designer and us as the owner.
Okay. And then looking, if I'm looking at the budget correctly, we had $4.3 million budgeted this year for both design and construction. Does this $500,000 still leave enough funds available for the construction component of this?
We still think that's, these guys back there, not it. In, in this construction environment, I have no, you know, who knows what's going on in terms of the construction pricing and so forth. So we had a, I think, original estimate was about 2.8 million that was developed five or seven years ago. So hopefully, a 4.3 is covering all the inflation we've had since that time. So as we go through, we'll keep the board appraised. And of course, we'll be bidding out the, the construction of it. So we'll have a step at that point.
Okay.
We did add the odor control component from the original budgeting that was done six, seven years ago.
That actually is a good segue into my last question. I did see the odor control. I just wanted to clarify that this, this really is moving forward because of aging, aging equipment, safety issues. And the odor was on top of that to address resident concerns, is that?
Right. And you want to, what do you guys want to come up with? They can explain better than I can the odor, what we're doing in terms of odor control. We have Jim Whitenor's our utility superintendent and Wayne Ramies our contract operator. So they know more about the odor control?
Jim Whitenor, utility superintendent. Yeah, I take a lot of calls with odor complaints at the, at the plant. And we've identified a few of those complaints as being right near the head of the plant and at the beginning. So we are working hard to isolate those. And that's why we've put that in with this project as the headworks is one of the leading causes of these odors. So, and then we'll tie some of that in with the other parts of the plant.
But the headworks work here, we're going to have to do anyway. It's not the odor driving this, it is?
No, no.
That's all I have.
Okay, anyone have anything else?
Just one quick question. So we've seen some of these proposals where, you know, we've, we've bid out projects before. And when we look at the chart, if there's like a huge spread between some of the contractors, it turns out that wasn't necessarily, we weren't looking, you know, apples to apples here. So, you know, one of the, one of the bids came back at 1.13 million. And, you know, this bid was at 458,000. So are we looking at apples and apples? Is it really that much of a disparity here in terms of what was, was?
No.
Return in terms of the bid? Or what, what were they proposing to do for 1.13?
They were proposing, one thing that they proposed was giving us an onsite, full-time resident inspector, which we did not ask for and we did not imply that. So there was three or 400,000 right there off the top. So they may have misunderstood, I don't know. But, no, we, nobody else did that, so we don't understand where they were coming from there.
Okay. Because everybody else was still, you know, in the range of, you know, 450 to 600 on the high side. But that, that one was just an outlier. And I was just wondering if there is, if there is maybe something that we were not doing that we should be doing? Because I want to be, you know, financially responsible in terms of how we're spending our dollars. But if there's something that we should be doing, I don't want to just do the cheapest fix if it's going to cost us more in the, the long run, so.
We had a master plan, as Alex pointed to, done about four or five years ago, actually. And to build this project, they projected we would start construction in 2018. We've been having other problems that we had to take care of. And at that time, the projected cost was, for design and construction phase services was 450,000, I believe, in that master plan. So I firmly believe we're in the right track with this budget.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Mark.
Ken, you want to read the, the resolution?
All right. I move to approve Superior Metropolitan District Number One Resolution Number SMD Number One Dash Three, Series 2019, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Superior Metropolitan District Number One approving a professional services agreement with Duberry Engineers Incorporated for the new headworks and odor control system design at the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, motion by Trust, or Director Lish, seconded by Director Laces. We need a roll call vote.
Lish?
Aye.
Laces?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Gorgenski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ryan?
All right, thanks, motion passes unanimously. All right, we're on to item number four, adoption of a resolution approving an agreement for services with Better City for Economic Development Consultant.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff released a request for proposals to provide economic development services to the town. Town received four completed proposals to provide these services. Two were from out of state, two were from in-state. After interviews and review of qualifications, staff is recommending that the board enter an agreement with Better Cities, who is based out of Utah, to provide these services to the town. The agreement is for not to exceed an amount of $58,245 based on a schedule of services and tasks, which include general economic development services through December, development of a work plan, workforce analysis and cluster analysis, help with the ICSE recon conference and then monthly reporting services to the town, which includes monthly written report to the board as well as attendance to a board meeting to provide an update on activities with regard to economic development services. Adam Hughes is with Better Cities and he is here tonight to present to the board a presentation he put together, as well as answer questions and any comments that the board may have. Adam, thank you for attending.
Thank you, Matt. It's nice to be here with you this evening. You've got a lot of great, exciting things that are happening in Superior. It's, it seems like a culmination of a lot of years of work to get to the point that you're at right now. And you guys have had certainly some great success in what you've been able to achieve. I thought I'd maybe start with a little bit of background about our firm, talk about some comparable projects and then talk a little bit about the Town of Superior and our approach in terms of providing services. I'd like to be conversational in tone, so if you have any questions or comments, feel free to jump in at any time. There we go. So our firm, as Matt mentioned, is based in Ogden, Utah. We were founded by a former mayor of Ogden who led the community through a really phenomenal economic revitalization, specifically starting with a strategic plan that was authentic to the community and that was based on some existing assets. And moved forward with implementing that plan over the course of three terms or 12 years. And that makes our firm a little unique in the sense that not only do we help communities do assessments, but also do the implementation on the backend in terms of doing outreach and recruitment to communities. We like to do projects, we like to see ribbon-cutting ceremonies happening and grains in the air and jobs being created. In Ogden, some of the areas of success that we had was focusing on primary jobs, recognizing that that's really the engine that drives local economies, regional economies and that retailers are really dependent upon underlying economic conditions within communities and within regions. And by focusing in those areas and recognizing how they all interplay together, taking a holistic approach is, is really an effective way to promote economic growth and, and business attraction within a community. What was really instrumental in the success of Ogden, as well as other communities that you look at that have, that have had success with economic development? that have, that had success with economic development is the way in which the community is messaged to prospects. And we focus really on quality of life. Uh, and a lot of similarities between Utah and Colorado in terms of the lifestyle, uh, that people are looking for in those types of communities. And this really resonated with some of the specific, uh, industry, uh, clusters that we were targeting in terms of recruitment and job growth. Uh, we went through massive planning effort to identify areas of redevelopment and private sector investment that can occur similar to what you guys are doing with your downtown plan. And we focused on really creating a destination attraction. Uh, that would be diverse in terms of its offering from the youth within the community, uh, creating an attractive place for them to gather, uh, as well as what we call family infrastructure. So places that families could also go to, to recreate. And this is a destination attraction with, uh, uh, it's called the Larry H Miller Megaplex thirteen screen, uh, theater component. And then on the right is what's called the Solomon Center, which is a recreation attraction with indoor rock climbing, indoor skydiving, indoor surfing, uh, and a gold gym, uh, and a family fun center as well. This really created, uh, kind of the, the destination, the reason for people to come into the community to recreate and to be entertained. And that led to a lot of catalytic investment around that core investment, including mixed use, uh, hospitality, residential. These are just some additional pictures. Office, uh, was a big component. Uh, it's really critical that you have daytime demand for your retailers and office is one of those demand drivers within communities. It's really important and critical. But it also allowed for us to retain our workforce within the community. So they weren't having to commute out. Again, some, these are all projects that were orchestrated. Uh, and we maintained the characteristic of our community. Twenty-fifth Street is a historic downtown. Uh, we wanted to be authentic to some of our past history as well with some of the, these buildings representing, uh, historic rehabilitation. Recreation was a critical component, uh, to what we were working on. And, uh, there's a, a river that ran through Ogden or runs through Ogden. Many people didn't know that it was actually there. Uh, but we activated it for recreation. This, this has become another destination attraction. So when you're talking about your trails and some of the amenities that you have, it's really important to establish that quality of life and those amenities within the community. And this is development that's occurring, uh, along the river corridor. And, and this map just shows some of the projects that were undertaken and, uh, we'll talk a little bit about, about that in another slide. But we really focused again on direct jobs and trying to recruit in businesses. And, uh, we activated this, uh, old army depot as a, a business depot and we're able to recruit in and work with, uh, the state economic, uh, development corporation to attract businesses from outside the state to locate into Ogden. Uh, Scott, uh, moved their North American headquarters to downtown Ogden, which was really great office use for us. And then they also utilized some of the space in Business Depot Ogden as well. And, uh, we found, and, and so this was the cluster that we had focused on in terms of recognizing that this was really aligned with some of the natural assets that we had in Ogden as well as our workforce. And we were able to, uh, attract in over a dozen different brands into Ogden. But what we, um, didn't anticipate was that because of our focus in a specific cluster and that quality of life that we were really focused on, was that we had some ancillary businesses that came in and located at the community because, uh, the workforce just seemed to match up with them as well. Uh, so the results were, there's over one point three billion in investment, over six thousand jobs created, hundred and fifty acres redeveloped. Ogden led the nation in job growth in two thousand and eleven. And received national recognition from a number of different media outlets, uh, regarding those efforts. Law Street Journal, L A Times, New York Times, Newsweek. Some other, other things there. So some of the key takeaways from our experience in Ogden was to really focus on quality of life messaging, not only with, uh, residents, but also employers and to leverage existing assets. Uh, what's really, I think, important to recognize is that, uh, employers need to locate somewhere where they can, um, find employees with the right skillset. And you'll notice in one of our scope of work, uh, adjustments was conducting a workforce and cluster analysis. And that is going to allow us to really understand what kind of workforce skills you have in this corridor, not only in the town of Superior, but in the surrounding communities that would be attractive to employers. And also recognizing that cluster effects are really impactful in the ability to recruit in businesses in certain areas where you have specialized skillsets and specialized assets. Ultimately, you need to be able to create a compelling business case for those businesses. And, and the incentives are, are in some cases what makes the deal work. But that is what ultimately determines success. So a little bit about myself, I have a background in accounting, uh, from, I'm originally from Virginia and worked in the D C area for about six years before moving out to Utah. I worked in a real estate developer's office for about two years and started with Better City in two thousand and twelve, uh, assisting numerous communities with their economic development needs. And, uh, also an entrepreneur in starting, uh, a couple of different businesses. So here are some representative projects. Uh, we're working with, ironically, there are a lot of similar challenges to what was discussed today during the work session and some of the things that we're working on in Clearfield, Utah. Slightly different project, it's only twenty-five acres. Uh, but again, I think there were a lot of similarities just in terms of trying to create attractions that would be catalytic to the rest of the development, similar to what you see in, uh, in the proposal for downtown. Also working in Lake County, Colorado on a, a large, uh, master planned community there as well with a number of different, uh, uses. And then some of the other communities that we've worked in had very specific asks in terms of what types of uses they wanted us to work on, uh, in recruiting into the community. So everything from a grocery store to hotel projects we've worked on, uh, and recruiting those in for our representative clients. This is a site plan of the project in Clearfield. We, we were actually involved in recruiting in the developer for this project and identifying opportunities for anchor tenants and helping to form relationships between the developer and those anchor tenants. And this part of the project here, uh, is slated, uh, for construction this year. Uh, this is a site plan. This is a sketch plan for a project in Lake County, Colorado, uh, with a town center, uh, town homes primarily and, uh, some hospitality on the side. This is the grocery store that I mentioned that we had recruited in. Uh, hotel in Brigham City, Utah, Price, Utah, and Nefi, Utah, uh, that were what they viewed as economic development impediments for their community to move forward with some strategic initiatives. Town of Superior, every community is different, obviously, and has different economic development needs and, uh, desires. And your town is really uniquely positioned, uh, in terms of economic development. You have really strong demographics. Uh, you've got great amenities that are already in place in the community. When you look at family friendly infrastructure, you look at things to do, uh, you have a lot to offer and a great quality of life. And you've had some really great success in terms of business attraction. You've got a lot of great momentum that is going to be really helpful and impactful, uh, as we execute on the scope of work. So some of the key areas that, uh, we saw in terms of the scope of work elements, business retention and expansion. Meeting with local businesses, understanding, uh, what opportunities there might be, uh, for them to grow and expand and being able to support those local businesses is gonna be really important. Surveying residents as well as businesses and understanding what economic development needs they see in the community. I had mentioned the cluster and workforce analysis, which is really going to be critical in terms of, uh, going out and trying to recruit in primary jobs and understanding where those skills lie. Uh, you know, some examples may be, you know, the financial, uh, tech, biotech, professional services, uh, industries. But we, we want, we wanna be able to focus on something that is not only strategic, but will have long-term value creation, not only for the community, but for the region as well. If we can identify the opportunity to focus on specific clusters, it will create, uh, a, a real virtuous cycle of investment. Uh, recruitment. So looking at the U S thirty-six corridor for opportunities, uh, conducting active outreach, uh, to economic development prospects and businesses, and then coordinating efforts among all the different stakeholder groups. So just in talking with the developer, uh, for downtown Superior, you know, one of the initial things that we would do would be to visit with him and his team and the brokers and understand what efforts they're pursuing and where the town's resources could be spent productively. So we're not duplicating efforts and we can be really synergistic, um, not only with them, but also other stakeholders in the community as well. And that becomes really important. Also plugging in with other economic development organizations and entities that may have leads for economic development prospects and working with them to attract them to the town. Uh, one of the, uh, other offerings that we provide through a sister company called Sea Source is consumer intelligence for strategic recruiting, identifying points of origin of consumers who are, uh, spending money within your community and where there may be opportunities, uh, for other retailers to leverage that data and understand that the, where the market is coming from in terms of spending within the community. And this, this can be really impactful in terms of being able to provide that data to retailers. So with that, are there any questions from the town?
Thank you for the presentation. Initial questions, Laura?
Sure. Um, so you mentioned a few of our strengths on one of the slides. Um, I'd like to know what you see as Superior's unique points of differentiation compared to the other communities that you've worked with.
So I would say location. I think what's really unique is that you're located between really, um, kind of a micro M S A with Boulder and then the major metropolitan M S A with Denver, which means that you'll be able to attract or, or at least capitalize on two different workforce sheds, which I think is really unique. Um, there are, and, and there are very few communities that have that specific location, uh, benefit. But the one that I can think of in particular, um, that I'm familiar with would be Lehigh, Utah. And they are seeing, um, just an incredible amount of growth in the tech sector, uh, because of their location between two workforce sheds in Utah County and Salt Lake County. They're able to pool and draw from both. And that's been really attractive to employers. So I think your location is a really great asset in the sense that you can pull from both Boulder and the Denver metropolitan area.
Um, and then also wanted to ask, um, you had said that Ogden required one point three billion in investment. Um, and the contract that we're preparing to sign with you today is obviously much smaller than fifty-eight thousand dollars. And so wanted to get a, just a better sense from you. If this is the starting point, um, what would that full implementation cost? I know it's not a fixed fee. So kind of what are we looking at over the next couple of years?
Well, that is a not to exceed fee. So it's a level of effort based on our hourly rates.
Right.
Um, the one point three billion investments, that was the total amount of private sector investment that occurred in that community. Uh, yeah, that was a one point three billion that came to us. So.
No, I, I didn't think so, but just particularly noting that it's not a fixed fee contract and it is hourly. And when I look at the scope of services, clearly that's bigger than what the fee we're signing today would cover. And so curious, what, what would that look like over the next couple of years to get all of that done?
So I think one of the first scope of work elements is the work plan. And what we like to do as part of that is to identify the areas of focus that we're gonna be working on in more detail and what level of effort would be required, uh, from a staffing perspective to achieve those. And then also timeframe. Some of those elements are just, they're, it's not gonna be practical to achieve those within nine months. It's gonna require a sustained level of effort year over year. Uh, but depending on the level of activity within the community and, you know, after nine months, we'd have a really good sense of the level of effort that would be required to provide that, that service to the community would be to come back at a future date. Uh, maybe it's a month, maybe it's two months before, uh, you know, that, that follow-on contract, if that's, you know, what the town would like to do. And, uh, kind of do the same thing in terms of laying out what that level of service might look like. But it would be within the, a similar range is what we're seeing now within the contract. There, there may be some slight adjustments just in terms of, you know, what areas of focus there might be. But I think that would really be an outcome of, uh, our engagement for this, this year.
Okay. Um, and then finally wanted to ask, have you, uh, been able to engage yet with our Superior Chamber of Commerce? Um, or do you have plans to do so?
Yeah, I met T J, uh, just two seconds ago, uh, and we were talking, uh, just briefly. But yes, I think that's really important in terms of scope of work elements. We'd like to survey the business community and the chamber obviously has those contacts and those relationships. So we'd like to work very closely with the chamber in terms of, uh, performing, uh, that. But also as, you know, prospects are approached, I think it's really important for them to understand the services that the chamber can offer and the relationships and as well as what the sentiment is of the business community in terms of conducting business here in Superior. It'd be really important to have an advocate like the chamber, uh, at the table.
Thank you.
So a couple of years ago, we hired Buxton to do some similar work. And, and there's elements of this that is, seems similar to Buxton, in particular the Sea Source report. So I guess, help me, in, in, in the conclusion of that story was we, we terminated that contract and, and didn't feel like it really gave us what we needed other than just a bunch of names of businesses. So help me understand how we're gonna get more value out of this contract than we got out of that one.
So that's a really good question. I think with Buxton, their primary focus is going to be retailers and focusing in on big box, mid-box, um, smaller, uh, inline stores, those types of things. Whereas our contract is more broad-based in terms of not only focusing on, on some elements of that, but also primary jobs and working on recruiting in economic development prospects that are not going to be in the retail industry, uh, but would be office users. And, uh, with, with Buxton, I mean, we use Buxton in Ogden. That was one of the first things that we did was we went out and, and, and hired them to identify some market opportunities. And we found that it wasn't really, um, helpful in terms of what we were looking to accomplish. And Sea Source has been developed as a cost-effective solution for those communities that would like to have, uh, similar information, but at a fraction of the cost. So I don't know what your contract was with Buxton, but it's probably gonna be sixty thousand dollars, something like that, just for the retail component. And our Sea Source, uh, offering is only about five or six thousand dollars. So it provides that level of market data on a monthly and quarterly basis. Um, and so it's a more cost-effective solution than what you would get otherwise. Uh, and again, you know, I think what differentiates us is that we're, we're just not focused on retail. Um, if you only wanted retail, there are groups out there that specialize in that. We're more broad-based in terms of the offerings that we provide to communities, in terms of workforce and cluster analysis, in terms of recruiting in office users, uh, and those types of things, and thinking strategically about how to create a virtuous cycle of investment within the community.
Okay. Thank you. Ken and Ken, and Kevin.
Uh, thank you for coming in. I really appreciate it. Uh, and as you do move forward, I, I do hope that you work well with our Chamber of Commerce. For the size of our town, we have a very fantastic chamber. One thing I, I did wanna, uh, get a little more details on, you showed us a great example of Ogden and all the fantastic outcomes. Uh, you talked to us about activating certain areas, uh, about clustering, about reaching out to the state, uh, economic board or some, something along those lines. Can you give us a better idea of what were your specific actions with your firm? And was some of this done by their town staff? Was this all you? Tell me specifically what your role in each of these steps was.
Yeah. So I had mentioned that our firm founder is the former mayor of Ogden. And he was heavily involved in every single aspect of redevelopment and economic activity that occurred in that community from going out and visiting with prospects to trading, to, um, attending trade shows, uh, and securing the relationships with those key, uh, businesses to locate in Ogden as well as leading efforts in terms of aligning incentives so that those projects can pencil. So it was a really, um, roll up your sleeves, get down in the trenches type of work that hadn't been done successfully prior to his taking office. There just wasn't that level of focus on economic development. So everything that our firm, um, has done from that time has leveraged that experience in terms of working with businesses, the development community, understanding what challenges exist at the project level, uh, what areas of opportunity. challenges exist at the project level, what areas of opportunity exist in terms of being able to recruit in businesses. Matthew was involved in every single aspect of what I've just shared with you.
So, but your firm didn't actually exist or participate in the Ogden example? That was more of just the work done while the founder was the mayor of the town?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. Can you talk to me further about some of your other examples then? What specifically are the exact tasks that you help with? Are you, what are your boots-on-the-ground tasks that you're doing day in and day out for us?
So I'll give you an example in terms of Clearfield. That might be, I think, a project that would be most applicable and comparable to what you've done here. So we're probably in Clearfield where you guys were maybe in 2012, 2013, where you have a developer in hand and you're working towards site planning, that development. Clearfield did not have a developer in hand, and the development community was not really looking at Clearfield in terms of making investment. And so what we really focused on doing was creating the messaging and identifying the opportunity for redevelopment in that community. And we spent about a year working on meeting, visiting with the development community, communicating the opportunity, discussing at a high level incentives and how those could be used to help make the project happen. And when we were able to secure a memorandum of understanding with that developer, we started looking at end-users. So how can we help the developer move that project forward by looking at specific tenants for that project? So what was interesting was, I think, was it Alex, the retail broker that was here, or Alan? Alan? He mentioned some of the real emerging trends within retail in terms of like Cinepubs, experiential retail. Those are the types of users that we've reached out to as well as hospitality. And so we have interest from a Cinepub, we have interest from hotel, we also have interest from a group that's going to be activating the pond that's located in that development for recreation. And so those are all key anchor tenants that are going to make that project happen and create the momentum and the activity that will help lead to higher occupancy and strong rental rates within the supportive retail as well as the residential uses. And so that was a project that we've been working on for two to three years with that community. And again, every community is different, so you guys don't have the need to find a developer, you already have a developer in hand. But in speaking with them, you do need assistance, or they need assistance, at least in identifying some key office tenants to occupy the office space and potentially some retail as well. And that's where we can lend some assistance in terms of capacity, which typical economic development department within a municipality would be leading the charge in those areas as well.
Okay. Going a bit of a different direction, does your firm provide any analysis or recommendations digging into what our town's current policies, procedures, regulations, taxes look like that could be making us less competitive or more competitive compared to our peer jurisdictions? And providing paths forward to fix anything that we're doing that may be hurting ourselves in attracting businesses?
Well, that's a really great question, and yeah, that's something that we can certainly look at as we move forward with the scope of work. But in terms of tax structure, in terms of, you know, your property taxes and what mill levies are there as they compare to other communities, that is not something that, a service that we provide. You know, that's typically what we refer to as a municipal service firm, someone that helps communities with their finances and with bond issuances and things like that. But we could certainly work in some level of comparison in terms of your tax structure, your tax rate compared to surrounding communities. That's certainly a really important consideration when prospects are looking at communities, what would be the tax implications of locating in this jurisdiction as opposed to another jurisdiction.
And I think that'd be a really important piece that would be valuable for us to see. And then my final question, as you go through this contract, how do you measure your own success? What does success look like month to month? And then at the end of this contract, how do you measure yourself as being successful?
Prospects. So I think within the first nine months, what we would look at is the number of prospects that have expressed interest in locating into the community, and then working towards memorandum of understanding or some type of letter of, excuse me, interest from them. I think that would be one area of measurement that would be, I think, really helpful in terms of how our services are measured. Again, we like to do projects and we like to catalyze projects, and so, you know, keep us at task. And if we're not performing, then hold us accountable. And that's the way we like to operate, we're comfortable operating in that fashion.
Between our downtown Superior area that you heard about tonight and our marketplace, is there a magic number of prospects you'd be hoping for by that end of the contract?
I think it really just depends on the size of the opportunity. You know, if it's a smaller tenant, that's probably not going to be as impactful as a major anchor and may not require as much work. But yeah, I think what would be most impactful for the community would be to identify an office user, especially for downtown Superior. For the retail component, I think that would really be a conversation we need to have in terms of where our level of focus is going to be. But if it's an entertainment use, that's where we would like to focus. I think that's, you know, retail's going through a transition, so if we could get one solid entertainment or recreation use to complement some of your existing retailers, that would be our goal as well as an office user.
First thanks. I'm struggling a little bit, so I'm not sure I'm going to have questions, more of a potential dialogue. I'm struggling on a number of issues. We're a very unique town in that we're only four square miles. We can't, you know, there's no, we're almost to capacity, right? We have this great little, you know, 1,400 dwelling units that we're building out across the street, but there's no, we're not looking to recruit new development, new industry. I'd love a commercial user here, but we're also going through this, retail as a whole is going through transition. And because we're such a small town with huge dependencies on big-box retailers, the transition is going to, it's going to be a very risky transition for us. Those, some of the big-box stores won't be here in 20 years certainly, and there's a couple I won't name, probably aren't going to be here in six to 12 months, right? You could go into the store and there's just nobody there. We're all buying our things from those stores from Amazon or wherever. Stores just will not exist. So I'm interested in how you might help us transition. And then one of the things that I'm also struggling with is, I think you have some great experience and some big ideas and might help us on the entertainment side of retail instead of big-box side of retail and may have that experience. But I also need somebody in the community who knows the guy that funded the brew pub up in Longmont and is looking to expand. And wait a minute, we got a lunch with him scheduled for this afternoon, and we're going to change the calendar, and I don't know how to do that with you when you live in Ogden. So I'm struggling on a couple of things. So summary, number one, the big-box transition, I think we are very vulnerable for that. Would like your feedback around that. And number two, when this was, this project was something I championed, I love the scope of work. I think it's a really good scope of work. It's just, to me, I didn't realize that we'd have an out-of-state player. Part of me is happy, part of me is confused, that is, that was interested in this. So help me understand how you work from us from Utah. It's not that far, but it's an airplane.
No, and those are really great questions, and those are concerns, the latter is a concern that, you know, we've had questions on with previous clients as well as how can you provide us with service if you're not from in-state or within the community? Let me address that first and then I'll address the big-box questioning concern. So you're absolutely right, a lot of economic development has to do with relationships and understanding who's done what, where the opportunities lie, and how to capitalize those and navigate through, you know, the noise to identify where those opportunities may lie. What we found to be very effective, and we've talked with Matt and Martin about this, is what we like to do is, we like to go and interview key stakeholders within the community and spend about a week doing that. We'll typically interview anywhere between 40 to 60 stakeholders. When we say stakeholders, you know, it may be someone that invested in a brew pub that, you know, the town recommends that we go and reach out to, or in talking with the Chamber, serial entrepreneurs within the community in the region where there are opportunities to discuss with them what they see as potential investments within the community. So what that allows us to do is to really form those relationships within those communities and have them involved and feel a sense of equity in terms of identifying what areas of focus we're going to be involved in, what projects that we can help catalyze and move forward. A lot of times, the best ideas come from the local community. There's someone that's identified a market opportunity but is struggling to bring that to market for whatever reason. And that's really the reason why we conduct those interviews, is to identify where those might be. And we've had some great success in doing that in the communities that we've served. A lot of businesses, as many of you may know, initial contacts are typically done over the phone and establishing some rapport to set up a face-to-face interview. And we're doing business or looking to form relationships with two businesses in Boulder that I visited with today, and those were relationships that, you know, it wasn't face-to-face where we met, it was over the phone. And so I don't think that particular area in terms of identifying those opportunities and pursuing those is something that you necessarily need to be in one particular physical location to do. There's certainly a necessity to visit face-to-face, and in those instances, we would be flying out here and visiting with those businesses and those individuals to do that. So I hope that addresses that question that you had.
Are any of your, I want interrupting, so go ahead.
Just to follow up on what you just said, I mean, conducting 40 to 60 interviews, where does that fit into the project plan you outlined? Because the initial first step says four hours of senior associate time and 11 hours of principal time.
Yes, that would be the work plan and the cluster and industry analysis would be part of that. But the, there's another line item that's just economic development consulting, and that would be incorporated in that scope of work element.
Okay.
Do you have any of your associates, principals, is anybody living here?
No, we're all based in, we're all based in Ogden. And, sorry, go ahead.
But to follow up on the office, the question of office prospect identification, I mean, we heard a lot tonight about the desire to have an office user in downtown Superior that support the daytime restaurants and so on. And I think, you know, their brokerage team is out there daily, probably identifying many prospects in Boulder that are outgrowing their space, that need something in a very short order. I think ours is, I don't think our issue is we need a list of potential office users. We need to know what's going to get that list that probably already exists, what's going to get them to build in downtown Superior versus going one more exit down to Broomfield where there's maybe some excess space. We've kind of got a little bit of excess office space in this corridor, so it's not a matter of who is going to be there, it's a matter of how can we get them here as opposed to down the highway. We've also got the complexity of, we've got a tax increment financing structure over there which creates an additional layer of complexity when it comes to, the parking is going to cost more. Interlocking, everything over there is surface parking for the most part. And so you've got office space with surface parking, we're going to have office space with structured parking, which is a whole different animal. So I think when you say we're going to develop a list of office users, I don't know that that is going to help us. We need to go a little deeper and get, how do we get that list of office users to execute over there?
That's a really good point, and I think that's going to come down to project economics. So how can we, what can we do? Is the tax increment all spoken for in terms of the master developer and putting in the infrastructure? Is there any remainder that's left over to help offset the cost of the parking or the vertical construction? You know, what, those are all detailed information that we need to understand in talking with the developer and his brokers. And so we're not duplicating efforts, but we're really focused on a core issue at hand and how we can best solve for that. And then trustee Ryan, to answer the question about the big-box space, you're not unique in terms of being, having a concentrated risk in big-box, and a lot of communities are facing something very similar. To make the assumption that you'll be able to backfill those big-box spaces with other retailers, I think is probably not likely, just the way that retail is transitioning to online behemoths who can compete much more effectively in terms of cost structure. So that raises some interesting challenges. How can you adaptively reuse big-box space? And what examples exist that communities have done to transition away from that into other types of uses? The other is, can there be some type of strategy associated with retailers that may not be dependent on the local population and would have the ability to sell outside of the region, perhaps nationally? Where you're exporting, you've got some level of retail and retail frontage, but they're also being able to export a specific good outside of the community. And we've seen some communities that have had success in that type of strategy. So those may all be things to consider in moving forward, what types of adaptive reuse can be done in those big boxes where there is probably, in some cases, not going to be another big box that will come in and replace that tenant?
So thank you for coming tonight and presenting. I agree with the comments that have been made. I think the scope of work that you presented is, if you can pull that off, is very impressive. And, you know, I think one of the areas of value that I think you're bringing to this board is, you know, the idea of an ongoing dialogue with the board about economic development issues. And I think that's one of the areas where we struggled previously. You know, we didn't know what was going on, you know, that our economic development consultant was doing, right? So we didn't know what success looked like, we didn't know what efforts were being put in to try to attract retailers, try to attract office users. So I think, you know, just a dialogue in and of itself is going to be helpful. You know, personally, you know, the way I look at the challenges that we have here, yeah, we have big-box retailers, but, you know, we've got an inordinate amount of our, you know, sales tax base coming from just, you know, five retailers. That is, you know, a ticking time bomb, and it's going to be a problem for us if even one of those goes away. So, you know, we need to diversify that sales tax base, and then we need some office users. And, you know, if you can help us kind of crack that nut and do it in a way where we're having an ongoing dialogue, I think that that's going to be really valuable. I'm struggling on the scope of work in terms of how much you're actually going to get done for a not-to-exceed price and where that line is getting drawn. So maybe that's something we need to just talk a little further about, like what realistically you can deliver for, you know, $58,000 and what realistically, because I don't have a problem, you know, $58,000 is not a number that we're suggesting here. You know, we certainly want to invest in the town and the community to make sure that we're getting this right. But I just want to know, you know, what exactly do we get for $58,000? What could you do for 100? What could you do for 150? What's going to cost, you know, $500,000? So help me kind of understand realistically, because if it's $58,000 just to get an idea of, you know, to get familiar with the town, build a work plan, you know, that's one thing. If it's, you can actually deliver on some of the things on the scope of work, that's something else.
Yeah, so that's a really good question. So the scope of work includes the work plan and then the workforce and cluster analysis within the first 60 days or so. And that combined with... and that combined with the interviews that I had mentioned is really our process of discovery. So we would look to have that really wrapped up within the first sixty days and really getting an understanding of, of what those opportunities are and where our area of focus will be. And of course, we'll dialogue with the town trustees in terms of what that's going to look like before moving forward. And then we get into implementation. And so the implementation on, you know, after that is really a level of effort based on, I think it's about thirty thousand divided by seven, whatever that works out to be. But that would be our level of effort every month on those scope of work elements. And so if, after, you know, nine months, we come to you and say, these are our results, whereas we're dialoguing, you know, we're, we're coming back and reporting what we've been able to accomplish, if we feel like, you know, we're not living up to those expectations, then we need to have that dialogue in terms of, does this make sense for us? Does it make sense for you? And reassess at that point. But what we've put together is based on our experience in other communities with similar scopes of work in terms of that level of effort.
All right, Adam, thanks for coming in. I appreciate the time. This has been a thing I think the entire town has been grappling with for a very long time. And trustee Ryan's point, we actually did already just lose a big box retailer. I saw Party Cities shutting down. So I don't know if that was the one you were thinking of, but...
I didn't know that.
Yeah, they're, they're on the street corner over the weekend with the going out of business signs up, which was, was news to me. And I, I do wanna echo some of the concerns here with the, the team being out of state, but you have done work in Colorado. Can you talk to us about how that's worked, challenges you guys have overcome, you know, because, you know, obviously you've got a great presence in Utah, you know, a lot of what you can do for us is probably leveraging the work in Utah. How has that worked in Rio Blanco or not worked? I just, I wanna get some feel, because I, I actually think bringing somebody from the outside might be a fresh set of eyes, you know, because there's a balancing act here between, Bricks Moore is the landlord that oversees this marketplace over here. You know, how much of it is their responsibility to backfill the empty spaces versus EcoDevo coming in and helping them? So, you know, if you've got a bigger rolodex, you know, how does that potentially augment them? And how have you been able to do that in some of the other communities?
So you mentioned Rio Blanco County, I'll, I'll speak to that. We did a lot of work in terms of identifying appropriate strategies for that community that can be leveraged and what areas are underutilized, but also match their workforce set. So they have a workforce that really enjoys the outdoors, and that's what they do in their spare time when they're not working in the oil and gas industry. And it kind of gets, gets back to that workflow plan that I was describing earlier, creating a strategy that's authentic to the community and leverages what assets they've got. We spent a lot of time recruiting in businesses that could leverage that workforce and some of the natural assets. We went to trade shows, we went to, you know, industry associations. We found an outdoor outfitter who, in Silverthorne, who had grown to over twenty-six employees. And again, going through the same process that I've just described, communicating the message to them about what this opportunity was, they moved to Meker to establish a new location, and they're going through the permitting process now with the National Forest. And that was all done remotely, found of our Ogden office, to a certain extent. Once the opportunity was identified and they said, yeah, we'd like, we, we would like to consider that, then we set up an appointment, we went out and we organized a, kind of a red carpet committee to go and meet with that prospect and, and help recruit them into the community. So I think that's one example within Colorado of, of what we've been able to accomplish in terms of working remotely and being able to identify an opportunity and recruit in a business associated with that.
Sandy, do you have anything?
I don't know.
Okay. Others? Okay, Laura?
So I know we've talked a lot about what comes after the initial work plan and the cluster analysis. And, and maybe to echo what Neil had said, I understand that that's going to vary depending on what you find. And can you give us an idea, I mean, it sounds like forty-four hundred a month, so it's twenty-nine hours a month, what, what might we expect in that twenty-nine hours, recognizing that it will differ based on your initial results?
So, that's a really good question. I think it will, first of all, identifying what prospects there might be in terms of the different uses that we've discussed and coordinating with the other stakeholders. So to the extent that we go and talk with the brokers, to the developer, coordinating those types of efforts, making outreach calls and going, you know, even further in terms of creating potentially some collateral that would be attractive to those prospects, setting up meetings, traveling to the community or to their place of business and visiting with them. I think those would be certain scope work elements that would be completed within any given month. Going to ICSC, I think that's a scope of work element as well, coordinating with the town, with your retail consultant, setting up meetings there, going and visiting with potential retailers, hospitality groups, those types of things would all be included in that scope of work.
So that's actually something else I wanted to ask about, the ICSC recon conference. And is that line item conference, conference fees for our town staff to attend, or is that solely for representatives from your firm to attend the conference?
That's solely for represent, that's solely for representatives of our firm to attend. That doesn't include any fees, any costs associated with your town staff attending that.
So then why would that be being billed to Superior rather than an investment in training for your staff?
I see, I'm, I'm sorry, the...
The conference?
Yes, the, the conference would be to represent the town along with town staff and going and visiting with retailers and hospitality.
So less, so more about the networking and less about the actual content at the conference?
Correct, yeah. No, we wouldn't be attending any of the educational seminars or anything like that.
Okay, gotcha.
That's floor time, going out and visiting with retailers and prospects.
Okay. All right, I think that is, that's good for, for now. We probably should have some board discussion and see what direction we wanna go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment? Okay, none, none seen. Okay, thank you. All right, discussion? So I, I, I feel some personal accountability here, right? Because I think I was the voice that said, you know, we need the, we need the, the, the superior advocate with national experience and knows our community, that's out there fighting for us every day. And I think, you know, I, I, I think they have really good experience. This frankly is less money than I thought it would be, but maybe the deliverables will be less than I thought it would be. I mean, we would, I, I would personally be supportive of spending much more if we could, if I knew we were going to be successful. This to me feels like, you know, a step in the right direction. And maybe next year, we increase the investment to have some local community advocate. But frankly, I'm, I'm a little torn by this. I mean, I, I do, I'm just, you know, it's not, Matt, maybe you can answer the question. We obviously didn't score this based on low cost because there was a bidder that was less than this. So from the technical evaluation, what, what stood out from the proposal?
This firm?
Yeah.
Well, I think based on the success they've had in some of the other communities as far as recruiting developer to the one community, businesses relocating, securing hos, they have good relationships with hospitality developers, hotel developers, which we need here, which we saw as a key indicator for us. Somebody that's not just focused on retail. We struggled with the out-of-state aspect of this as well, but after sitting down and having, I mean, we flew, Adam flew out to meet us because we thought that was important because the first interview was over the phone. And we didn't think we could base our decision based off of that. The, there was, there was four firms, two were, didn't have the qualifications that we thought were necessary for this job. And then we had Better City, and then the other firm that was in-state had good qualifications, but it was a single person firm.
Right.
And we thought that based on their knowledge and expertise and success they've had, that they'd be able to provide us what the services we're looking for to redevelop the marketplace, bring in hotel users, secure an office user for downtown Superior, give us that voice in the broker community that we've been missing.
And there's a few, there's also a few kind of knit projects, right? Like we have, I guess I gotta be careful, but we have a recently evicted tenant and a big spot, you know, over there. That's, I don't wanna call that a knit project, but, you know, that's an opportunity project.
Definitely.
We have a small business owner who lives in the community who can't afford his rent, but, you know, our kids are getting their bikes fixed there, and he's become part of the community. We all want him to be inclusive of the community.
Yeah.
That's, I, I'm struggling with, you know, the uniqueness schizophrenia here that Superior has where we have these big box dependencies, and I want somebody that has a relationship with, you know, Marriott corporate to think about some, you know, new brand that's potentially gonna come in, or can help us transition from one of the big box stores to some type of recreational climbing, you know, jumpy, I don't know, whatever it's called. The Ninja Warrior, thank you, is where I was going. I think that stuff's important, but it, but I'm, but I still struggle with the, you know, the out-of-state. But I think for the cost that this is, you know, we spent a long time talking about this. I'm supportive, I just, I recognize it's late on a Monday, I just, you know, we need somebody, we felt like our last consultant didn't, maybe was not the advocate that we had expected for the town. And so we just real, and we're happy that we have great members of the community. We have a couple committees, I think of CAPS maybe because they're my favorite because I, you know, I'm the, I'm the liaison for CAPS. But we have members of the community that know this community so well, that are so passionate about it. And I just think that, you know, maybe if we paired one of those community members, or maybe you'll just trip into somebody else as, as you're doing this, these interviews, you know.
Yeah, and those interviews, Martin and, and Adam and my vision is that those will include board members, one or two at a time, to get your feedback and, and interest for the community. And then this is the first step. The way we, Martin and I are looking at it as the first step.
Right.
And then next year, we have the success that we're hoping to have, and we'll continue to build on that with this firm and, and see what we can get done in the community.
Okay. I'm, I'm supportive of, of moving forward here. I would just say that I think to be successful, I think what we're gonna be really looking for, we've got a lot of board members that are really, you know, focused on, on the details of things and not lists of things. So I, I think the, the real key to success here is find, is giving us details on the, the state of Superior and, and what we need to do to get these different opportunities accomplished and, and not just giving us a list of, if here's a couple of retailers that would be great in Superior, but no, it, it's, it's like, how are we gonna get them versus the next town or the next town, getting who wants them as well? So, others?
I'm generally really supportive of this. The one thing I didn't ask Adam to do is to give us a list of everything wrong with Superior. I mean, I think at some point through this process, we're gonna have to identify what our, our issues are. And we're gonna need to see what the, what we need to do to overcome those. But I'm generally in support of this. I recognize it's the first, it's like a down payment on a process.
Right.
And I don't want this process to take ten years and we have empty boxes for the next five. I think we've gotta be realistic that, you know, within eighteen months, or even six months or nine months, we reassess and decide if this makes sense.
I think you made a good point around, it's not really what's wrong with Superior, but we, it's also realistic expectations. If we're not gonna get a brew pub because we don't have enough people that live in the town and you need, you know, and the, the data will tell you that you need at least ninety thousand people within four square miles and we don't have it, then let's get that direction from a consultant that knows what we're talking about and move on and figure out what we can recruit. And I think that's one of the things that we, I don't know what we can and cannot have. I don't really know what's wrong with the town, by my opinion. But I mean, I think that's, that's a good point. We need, we need the hard truths.
Yeah, no, I mean, because I think we've all listened to the community complain about downtown Superior, the fact that we wanted all the business and retail, or retail and office space, and all we're seeing is residential go up. But maybe that is the balance, I mean, obviously Ranch Capital is telling us, you know, what they see their market, but, you know, hearing from another party that this is probably the best way to go, and, you know, seventy-three thousand square feet might be the upper limit of what we can sustain. We need to hear that.
I think, I mean, I just have a lot of concerns around the fact that, yes, we absolutely need to do current state analysis, a hundred percent. I'm worried that we're taking a lot of time to ramp up. Forty to sixty interviews, yes, I think that number is appropriate. But when we look at the actual size of this contract, and we've determined that that part goes in the general economic development services, of which at a blended rate, we have twenty-nine hours a month. So that means it's gonna take six, probably, Neil, you're spot on, six to nine months just to get those interviews done, just to get the current state. And I worry that that's a lot of time on background, that if we had someone more local, they might be able to do that a little bit faster.
Right, at the same time, I'm not sure I wanna miss another cycle, right? I mean, we go back to the drawing board, I mean, this is, this is a down payment, this is, you know, the try before you buy. If this is the right relationship for the town, then we could proceed. If it's not the right relationship, then worse, I mean, the, the good news is, we have a really...
Small amount, yeah.
It's a small amount, and we have a really good SOW. By way of background, we have another project where the SOW was not as well defined, and we missed expectations. While it's...
So, so I do question the SOW because while I agree with both your point and Mark's point, I think the scope is awesome, that's not the scope we're going to get for fifty-nine thousand dollars. And so that's where I would much rather see an SOW that is shorter and says, this is what we're actually going to get, rather than a long SOW that says, here are the many potential things we might deliver, but you're only gonna get a couple of them. And, and I totally get that we need to start with that two-month, I forget the, I'm forgetting what we called it, but start with the two-month part. I just would rather we determine the rest of the SOW then at that point, rather than saying, well, let's sign a nine-month contract, we know what the first two months are, but the next seven months could be anything.
We didn't, I, I agree. At the same time, we had a RFP that anybody in the nation could have responded to. We had four respondents, we had staff do a, run the technical selection criteria. We did not select a low bidder, we selected the most technically qualified, who's also low cost. I think there is some faith we have to have in the process that this is, this is what we get. And it doesn't mean that we're, it's not like we're locked into a six-year contract here for, you know, a million dollars. I mean, this is, I mean, frankly, I wish we had found this, we should have done this to help recruit Ranch Capital and the developers seven or eight years ago and thought about what our brand was and really get out there. And then maybe had a process that had three or four different Ranch Capitals competing for the business instead of ranch saying, you know, take it or leave it, this thing has an expiration date. So this, you know, to me, feels like the, it's, it's the right project at the right time, and we need to test, you know, trust the process.
Could, I mean, I, I really like Neil's suggestion to say, hey, in six to nine months, we come back and reevaluate. Would anyone be open to doing that sooner? Because I, I would really prefer to check in, if, if the bulk of the work that we know, if the bulk of the work that we know that we're getting is this development of the work plan, the cluster analysis, which will all be done in the next sixty days, I would really like us to not just get a report out in sixty days, but have a hard look at what is the full plan after that and what are we getting month by month for June, July, through the end of the year.
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, that's, it's a mischaracterization to say that's the bulk of the work, just the first two months, because that's the identifying stage, and then we implement. And then there's gonna be check-in processes along the way. So if we're not seeing what we want, we're not hearing what we don't like, this is a not-to-exceed contract. So there's a stop. We're not...
Understood. I just would rather stop it before we get to sixty thousand dollars if we determine after the fifteen thousand dollars that we don't like the plan at that.
I agree. I'm just saying, I think we're there already. I think that's...
Yeah, I mean, there'll be monthly reports plus in-person reports to the board, and at any opportunity, the board would have. We have the standard termination clause in our agreement, we have in every other agreement.
I like your suggestion. Your suggestion is already in this.
Right, I think Clint had a really good point that we're all pretty engaged and excited about this. Isn't, you know, there were some other projects that maybe they, they were happening in the background and we held our breath thinking things were going swimmingly and maybe they weren't. This one, I think we're gonna know in six to eight weeks. If it's not going really well, or the interview process isn't going well, then I think we do have the opportunity to pull the plug. But it doesn't mean, you know, if we, if we pull it a third of the way through, let's just not, let's be realistic. We're not getting a third. We're not paying a third of the money. And Ken's point is good. This thing's pretty front-loaded. And staff, you know, from an activity perspective, it's...
Well, it's only about $15,000 in the first 60 days. So there's $40,000 on the table that we would spend after that. So that's where I'm saying it's not really that front-loaded. I would rather do a check-in sooner rather than later.
Did I misunderstand? I thought we were gonna be getting regular reports. I mean, are we talking about face-to-face or, I mean, I think that was part of my frustration in the past. We had somebody we were paying a significant amount of money and I heard from them once a year. I mean, I literally heard from them, if I was lucky, once a year. So I do, and I appreciate completely where Laura is coming from. But, and I guess my thing is, I expect reports, regular reports on a monthly basis or every two-week basis. And even if it's that you're coming and talking to us, because I think I'm gonna start to get a gut feel over, are you blowing smoke or do I really feel like you're making some progress? And so I think there's, I think it's built in there because you're gonna be coming and talking to us. And for me, a written report isn't gonna cut it. I need to have the opportunity to have face-to-face dialogue with you to be able to say, yeah, you're telling me something I already knew. I mean, I don't need to know, big-box retailers, we're probably not gonna replace them, which is what we heard from our previous consultant. And okay, yeah, we know that. But what we need to know is, okay, what do we do?
And I'm fine with that. I mean, I saw that we're going to be getting those reports. Maybe to make my point more clear, I would really like if as a board, we come back in maybe the June timeframe.
Yeah, actually, I agree with that. And I think the budgeting process is gonna be the forcing function. You know, when we start talking about 2020 budget, you know, this is gonna come back up in August and September. And I think that'll be the right timeline, given the scope of work between now and then. I think we're all gonna have a really good feel based on the monthly reports and the in-person reports as to whether or not we want to continue and if we want to scope it up or scope it down.
I agree. I just, I would like to not spend, I would like to not agree that we're going to go ahead with $58,000. I would be more comfortable with that first couple of months and then signing a contract from there going forward.
I think we're all generally in agreement here. And, you know, I think we have a tendency to maybe micromanage things, so we don't need to micromanage. I think Matt, Martin, what you guys did in terms of the due diligence and interviewing these companies and making a recommendation for approval is very much appreciated. Obviously, this was something that the board indicated was a big priority, that we wanted to spend additional money and effort on an economic development consultant. But, you know, none of us want an academic exercise here. Like, we don't, we're four square miles, 13,000 people as of the last census. The report itself about, you know, the census of Superior is gonna be relatively simple to do, you know, understanding the Boulder, Denver area, Louisville. You know, obviously, that's gonna take a little more work to understand, you know, who's around. But at the end of the day, you know, what we want is results. You know, we want to have economic development. We don't want just reports to look at. And I agree with Sandy. I think we're gonna be, we're going to be getting the opportunity to review things on a regular basis. And those kind of ongoing opportunities for dialogue will serve as those, you know, check-ins. And I don't think it's necessarily smart for us to create more work for ourselves to like put another agenda item on a town agenda in two, three months to re-up a contract when we're talking about $15,000 versus $58,000. You know, I think we just support the contract that's currently approved and then review the deliverables as they're coming in. And if there's a problem, we'll deal with it. I don't think that there's gonna be a problem. I think, you know, the presentation tonight and the materials and the statement of work, I mean, I think that this is gonna be a really good partnership. I've got confidence that it's gonna work much better than anything has in the past. And I think we should just trust in this new relationship to work its way out, get us the information that we need and hopefully deliver on the results that we're looking for. Office users, additional investments in the town.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I've got one more comment. Are we gonna do discussion after motion as well or no?
I don't really need to. Well, let's just go ahead. Any further discussion now?
So, Adam, I hope you heard all this tonight. You're coming in with high expectations here. We have lots of vacancies in our marketplace. We have no reliance on big boxes. We have a town center that needs to be filled up. There's a lot of expectations that we have and it's not, I think, analogous to any of the specific experience a firm has. So keeping us in the loop and addressing our very specific concerns, I think, will be very important to your overall success here.
Okay, anything further?
Make a motion. Town of Superior Resolution Number R-21, Series 2009. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Superior to provide an agreement for services with Better City LLC for an economic development consultant.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Ryan, second by Trustee Hammerlin. All those, or roll call vote, please.
Ryan?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Squazitsky?
No.
Lish?
Yes.
Laces?
Yes.
Amory?
Yes.
Folsom?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion passes. All right, and we look forward to working with you. Appreciate it. All right, next item on our agenda is item number five, adoption of a resolution supporting a motion by the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council to oppose oil and gas exploration, production, and hydraulic fracturing on and under rocky flats. Mark?
So thank you. So I asked Matt to add this to the agenda. We, as you all can recall, a couple meetings ago, when I was reporting back from the February Rocky Flat Stewardship Council meeting, we discussed kind of an oral motion that we initially brought up about, you know, the council as a showing solidarity amongst local governments getting behind a resolution in opposition to any and all oil and gas drilling on and under rocky flats. At that meeting, there was, you know, concern that this was a little bit of a surprise, that it was just like an oral motion, nobody had the opportunity to bring it back to their respective councils, boards, and commissions. We agreed, so we withdrew the motion and said that we would actually introduce a written motion that would be circulated amongst the council, which would give people the opportunity to share it with their respective councils, see if there was any opposition, offer suggestions to the motion. And then we would reconsider at the April 1st meeting. So that motion was, we drafted it. I circulated it to the board back in February. It was sent then to Rocky Flat Stewardship Council. There were no comments made by any of the members in the month of March. So we went to the April meeting, considered the motion, had a discussion about the motion actually first. And it seemed that there was, you know, opposition from certain local governments. Jeffco, Broomfield, and Thornton. And the, one of the opposition statements from one of the members was, well, each and every one of us can pass a motion like this, can't we? And I said, yeah, absolutely, we can. But one of the thoughts behind bringing this motion was that, you know, there's strength in numbers. One of the other kind of positions in opposition to this motion was, well, this is just an aspirational motion. It doesn't have any teeth. But one of the examples that was given was about five years ago, there was a prescribed burn that was planned on rocky flats. At that point in time, the council got behind a motion unanimously in opposition to a prescribed burn on rocky flats. Didn't have any power behind it, any teeth, but it started the ball rolling. And then the Metro Mayor's Caucus got behind it and they did their own motion. And then it got up to the local congressman and the decision-makers. And then the prescribed burn was canceled. So these sorts of motions, even though they don't have teeth, they have the power to influence. And so I thought that we could, since it's our motion, we could lead by example. We could pass it here, assuming that we pass it here tonight. I'm going to let the council know that we pass it. I'm gonna encourage others to do the same. And then when we reconvene in June, at the June 3rd meeting, it's my hope that the motion or something in substantially similar form to the motion, in the event that it gets redlined, will be considered and then passed, hopefully unanimously. There have been certain changes made to the motion right now in terms of the whereas clauses and things like that. But the conclusion of the motion, you know, opposition to drilling and fracking on and under rocky flats remains in the motion. So that's kind of how we got to where we are. That's why we're bringing it here. I hope, you know, we can lead by example and that that will help its chances for success in June.
Mark, I appreciate your leadership on this. I think this is, you know, the difference between committees that kind of exist just to have meetings and committees that, you know, actually can affect change. And your example of how the, you know, the burn issue was opposed, I mean, that's spot on. So I really appreciate your leadership on this. And I mean, it really puts some people's feet to the fire because, you know, as it should. And things are easily forgotten over time, but if you kind of keep people focused on these things, you know, change will happen over time. So I'll be supporting this resolution.
Thanks. The other thing I should just add, in drafting the motion, one of the things that Ken and I worked on it, we were trying to make it as really non-controversial as possible and we didn't want to make this a partisan issue. So where we took the verbiage for the actual motion itself was from the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council's website itself. So there's a fact sheet and talks about his, you know, history of rocky flats. So all the whereas clauses came from the language of the council. So this wasn't a, oh, well, Superior is trying to politicize the rocky flats issue. It was, no, we're using the language from the council itself. Be that as it may, it seems that there still might be some objection to the language and if it needs to get changed, it needs to get changed to get it fast. But, you know, that's kind of what our thinking was because we were really trying to do this in a way that was, you know, something that was just non-controversial and factual.
I just, can I echo what Clint said? I really do appreciate you taking the lead on this. This to me was, I mean, it's a great idea to propose a resolution against something that's a horrible idea. And I've never spoken to anybody, regardless of where they lived or what side of the aisle they sat on, that thought potentially drilling under a superfund site that unambiguously still has some amounts of plutonium in the soil is a good idea. It's a horrendous idea. Now, we're not the EPA or DOE, so we can't physically prevent something. But this is absolutely the right thing to do, to say that we oppose and every government in the metro area should be doing the same. So I really appreciate what you're doing and this is my complete support.
Yeah, this is a no-brainer for me. I mean, it seems like we shouldn't even have to do this, but, you know, knowing where the council stands is important. Not just for the local neighboring communities, but it sends a, I'd hope it sends a message to all the future Highlands natural resources out there that, you know, be that as it may, that they may get the mineral rights, you know, they have to overcome public opinion to do anything there. And I think that's, it's important, the stewardship council, you know, stands up for what the communities want. And I think, we gotta be honest, there's a weird awkward relationship between the communities around rocky flats and the tacit ignorance that some of the communities want to just ignore everything that goes on there. And it often feels like we're the ones out on a limb, whether it's, you know, pushing back on fishing wildlife or anybody else. I think this is the right thing for us. And we might be the only ones that pass it unanimously, but I think that's just the way that we are. I think this is great.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, entertain a motion.
Well, I also just want to thank Ken. You know, he's shown up to, you know, both in the meetings since, you know, we've been the member and the alternate. And, you know, he helped me draft this motion. He's chiming in at all the meetings. He's an advocate for Superior. And, you know, it's really helpful to have a partner in crime on this. And, you know, the ability to have somebody to use as a sounding board on drafting these issues. And I really appreciate him being there with me in the trenches.
Thank you, Ken.
So I'd like to make a motion. Town of Superior Resolution Number...
22?
22, Series 2019. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Superior supporting a motion by the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council to oppose oil and gas exploration, production, and hydraulic fracturing on and under rocky flats.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Broton Laces, second by Trustee Lish. All those in favor? Passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, anything further before we adjourn? All right, we're adjourned.
Still earlier than I thought.